Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, that was a good one. I don't know if it's the League of Women Voters or the student government, students that are here that drove that. But, good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. We'll call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have a copy so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. Now, if you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you please speak clearly into the microphone so that we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. And from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available at Village Hall and also on our website at wilmette.com. Also, our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet, and if you look up, you can actually see the cameras, and the red dot indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors to follow the proceedings of the Village Board, to see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask, and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board and other local government meetings at wilmette.com. And I would like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmette who tune in regularly to Channel 6 to follow the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can view the very same materials that the Board members receive. This week's packet contained 308 pages. We've had an opportunity to review the information in the packet, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please tell us the most relevant, most material, the most important points you really want us to focus on. And finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy of those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices. And while we're turning off our phones, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll. Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Barrow?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
President Walensky?
Here.
We're all here, so we obviously have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. We have a very full agenda tonight. I am going to defer public comment until the end of the meeting, so we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda, and all items that begin with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda. So tonight, starting on Page 1 with Item 3.1, all of the items on Page 2, and then the first three items on Page 3 ending with Item 315, those are the items on the Consent Agenda tonight. Items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval, and if an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by a trustee, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda, may I see a show of hands? Moving on, are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay, seeing none, now I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda? Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Walensky? Aye. So the motion carries the Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you were here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved, and I'll clarify for people who are here tonight, again, all the items beginning with 3 have been approved, and that includes land use item 33, 34, 35, and 36. So if you were here for one of those items, it was just approved, no further discussion of those items, or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda. So you are free to leave, also more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you are leaving now, it is early, so please stop by one of our downtown restaurants before heading home. And we have an incentive, there's actually, if you look on the table on your way out, there are these little coupons, good for $5 off, tonight only, at certain of our restaurants. So, please stop by if you can. All right, we'll move on to Report of Officers. We've got a big agenda here tonight with some proclamations and the like. Item 4.1 is proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters, and I will read that proclamation. Whereas on February 14, 1920, the League of Women Voters was formed at the Congress Hotel in Chicago, Illinois. Whereas the League was formed six months prior to, but in anticipation of ratification of the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote in the United States. Whereas the League was a political experiment designed to help 20 million women carry out their new responsibilities as voters by educating them about issues. Whereas from the beginning, the League determined that it would be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing any political party or individual candidate. Whereas the League continues today as a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Whereas today, the League is comprised of members in over 700 local, county, and state leagues in all 50 states, plus the District of Columbia, the U.S. Virgin Islands, and Hong Kong. Whereas among those state leagues is the League of Women Voters of Illinois that was incorporated on March 22, 1920, and in turn is composed of over 40 local leagues with almost 4,000 members. Whereas among those local leagues in Illinois is the Wilmette League of Women Voters, which was incorporated on June 11, 1924, and is composed of over 200 members. Whereas, members of the League first study and then take action on a broad range of issues after reaching consensus on positions. Whereas leagues at all levels, among other activities, register voters, educate voters by holding candidate forums and publishing voter guides, publish public policy research, and hold meetings on key issues. Whereas, the League is a civic organization that has fought since 1920 to improve government, engage everyone in the decisions that impact their lives. And whereas the League will celebrate its 100th anniversary on February 14, 2020, now therefore I, Robert T. Walensky, Village President of the Village of Wilmette, do hereby proclaim February 14, 2020, as the date for the Village of Wilmette to celebrate the League of Women Voters and its vision of a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. So there are a number of members of the League of Women Voters here tonight, so I'd ask them all to come up. We're going to do some pictures with the proclamation. And actually, if I talked to the President of the League, if the Board members would stand behind, that would be great. They'd ask that you guys would be included in the picture tonight. Congrats.
the meeting and things like that?
Yes. Thank you to the Women of the League, Women Voters who came out tonight, and thank you, ladies, for everything you do for our community. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 4.2, which is Adoption of Resolution 2020-R-3 commemorating the contributions of Village Manager Timothy J. Frenzer. For those of you who are unaware, Tim is retiring this week after 27 years with the village. And we've also, which will happen in the next, we have designated Mike Bremen, the current Assistant Village Manager, to step into Tim's spot. And I just have a few words to say here, and then I will let Mike say a couple of words and open it up to the trustees if they've gone to say anything about Tim, and then we will read the resolution. We actually have a number of other resolutions and other things to present, and we'll take some pictures. It's going to be, this is going to be a pictureful night tonight. So, most residents don't really know how important it is to have a strong Village Manager. I mean, it's very important to have a strong leader on top of any organization, and frankly, the village is no different. It's also important to have a very strong team, and Tim has attracted a very talented team to the village. The village staff, not the Village Board, but the village staff led by the Village Manager makes it happen every day for our residents and our business owners and people who visit Wilmette. And with an exception of, well, there's quite a few people actually in the room tonight that know how much a Village President relies on a Village Manager. And as Village President, I've had the benefit of Tim's wisdom and his years of experience and his institutional knowledge during my entire tenure on the Board, and for that, I'm very grateful. As Village Manager, Tim has played a significant role in all the village's accomplishments over the past 11 years, and I will quickly run through some of the more major accomplishments. In the area of economic development, starting back in 2010 with the Village Center Master Plan, which really became the blueprint for the revitalization of downtown, and I would put the revitalization of downtown with the new restaurants and retail and the transient development that's occurred also at the top of the list of things that have been accomplished during Tim's tenure. The redevelopment of the old Fort Site at 611 Green Bay Road, the apartment building across the street, there was also a new apartment building built on Greenleaf recently, and those are the two, the first two multifamily buildings built in Wilmette since Mallinckrodt was redeveloped in 2005. So, we had a hotel built in southwest corner of Wilmette, the Marriott Residence Inn. There is a memory care center that is now under construction on Ridge Road, and then the redevelopment of the American Legion property, which has not yet begun but was approved by the Board. All very significant economic development projects of the past 11 years. On the infrastructure side, the West Park Sanitary Sewer Project, which is one that the village is rightfully very proud of, the impact that that's had on people's lives. And as many of you know, the Neighborhood Storage Project is also a major sewer undertaking, which is underway, but the real serious construction starts this year. The Hibbert and Skokie Boulevard intersection was reconstructed, Locust Road just had a reconstruction, Central Avenue, we secured grants for the reconstruction of Central Avenue, as well as a planned downtown streetscape. And also, again, sort of these unsung parts of village government, but we've made significant improvements to our water plant, which has supported getting new wholesale water customers, which is really important as well, because when we utilize that plant fully and we make a margin off the water, we sell to Glenview and Kennelworth and Gulf, and soon to be North Main, not on yet, that helps keep taxes lower for our residents. The restoration of Elmwood Dunes Preserve, those of you who remember that, it was a great public-private partnership that might not have gone the way it had gone, and I'm proud of the fact that the village has won a Sunshine Award for Transparency, and we got a perfect score, one of just, I think, seven or eight municipalities in the whole state that have a perfect score, because that's stuff we care about. And technology enhancements, improved communications with residents, cost-saving initiatives, the list goes on and on, those are the headline accomplishments, but frankly, just as important is really making sure that the level of services that our residents have received every day from our police department, from our fire department, from our public works department, that that level of service has been maintained at a high level throughout your tenure. So, Tim, your contributions to the village have been substantial, both as Village Manager and Corporation Counsel, and on behalf of the Village Board and the residents of Wilmette, I wish, I thank you for your service, and I wish you well in your retirement. So I would ask Assistant Manager Bremen if he'd like to add anything, and then I will open it up to the trustees. And then we actually have a resolution that I have to read, we have to vote, there's a little bit left here to do.
So, President Walensky did an excellent job of summarizing Tim's many accomplishments over the past 11 years, but for those of us who've had the privilege to work for Tim, it's been about so much more than those accomplishments. It's been about the opportunity to work for a leader as compassionate and as caring and as thoughtful as Tim. One of the most important things to Tim was protecting his employees, and not just the five he worked with upstairs every day, but the 200 throughout the village. And we have a lot of public safety personnel in the room tonight, and they may not have ever seen it on a day-to-day basis, but he cared so much about the safety of all of our employees, that making sure they were respected and treated well. And that's not something that can be, you know, it's just, it was an incredible compassionate approach to leadership that, you know, I really appreciate it, and I know the staff really valued and appreciated, and it's something I'm going to take with me in my career. I wouldn't be where I am today without Tim and his support for his employees and his thoughtfulness. And Tim was also the most brilliant person that I think many of us have ever worked for, but he also respected our opinions and our ideas, and always had an open mind when we were looking to do something different or to do something better. And it's just really been a privilege and an honor, and I know I speak for all of our staff, just to say thank you, Tim. It's really just been a phenomenal ride.
Thank you. Members of the Board?
I don't know how you top with those, you said President Walensky and Mr. Bremen, but I'd echo everything, and I think you said a few things, and what I've learned as being trustee is, we were really fortunate as residents to have somebody like Tim leading our village, and he's built, he's made a difference, he's made a mark, and he'll be missed. We're in good hands, but he's leaving Wilmette in a much better place than when he started. So, he'll be missed, Tim, but congrats, and like everybody else, I've learned a lot from you.
Trustee Dodd?
Tim, I first just want to say thank you for all I'm, for all you've taught me as a trustee. As I reflected, I keep thinking about my first three months as a trustee, which was very hectic for all of us. I think in front of us, we had our, I do remember, and I'll never forget, my first phone call with you and Mike on minimum wage, and right on the tails of that, I think we had the Stormwater Project, and then right on the tails of that, we had Loyola. And I was sitting where Trustee Kersman is today, and I was brand-new, and I didn't even know how to tackle looking at these packages, I didn't even know how to tackle any of the issues, and so I just, you helped me significantly and helped me to be a better trustee, and I'm just going to really miss that. So, and I know we didn't always agree, and I really appreciated your patience with me getting to the right place, or what I thought was the right place, so. And then the second thing I just want to add is, you've left a lot of incredible things that you've done, but thank you for planning for the future, and thank you for planning for us to allow somebody like Mike to take over. That's going to be, that also, I think we're obviously very happy to have Mike in the role, but that's because of your leadership, and I think all the residents in the community should know that. And the staff, I tell people this, and I've said this before in front of many meetings, but we as residents of the community are so lucky for the staff we have here. And I am always, that was probably one of the first things I learned, and that's a tribute to you, so, thank you.
I'll echo.
Trustee Plunkett?
Oh, sure, I'll echo. Trustee Dodd, thank you, Tim. I've had the privilege of working with you for the past five years, and I can say that whenever I talk to you about an issue, or you emailed me, or I came into the office, I left feeling that the Village of Wilmette was in the best hands it could be, that somebody who was so knowledgeable and so thoughtful was in charge, and it just made me feel great. And I think that the staff that Tim has amassed is a reflection of what a fantastic leader he is, because I think a lot of village residents have had the opportunity to interact with maybe, you know, one or more staff members in the course of living here, but it is such a high-quality level of staff that works for Wilmette, and we are truly fortunate to do that. And I've worked in government my whole career, and I've had family work in government, so it is truly, you know, an honor to see such dedicated people, and it's really, you know, at Tim's direction that he has attracted and kept this fantastic staff. Thank you.
Trustee Barrow?
I would only add that, Tim, we first met many years ago when we were both much younger, and I was on the Plan Commission and you were the Corporation Counsel, and the thoughtfulness and the judgment that you displayed at that time, I've just seen carried forward in your role as the Village Manager. I echo 100% of what my fellow trustees have said. In my tenure on the Board, you've made me a better trustee by answering my questions and always being thoughtful and complete, and I think you've made us better, you've made the village better, and as Trustee Plunkett has said, perhaps your greatest achievement is that you've put in place people and policies that will just lead Wilmette into the future. It's a tribute to your leadership, so, thank you very much.
Trustee Kennedy?
Tim, I barely know you. I'm news, I'm guess one of the newer members on the Board, and I wasn't on Commissions before, so I've only had a few months working with you, but I've been so impressed, and I don't think anyone could step into the role of a trustee without the support and the education that I got from Tim. It's just been tremendous. And another thing I'd like to say is that, even though I don't have a lot of experience with you, your staff does, and the number of times I've heard them refer to you in incredibly favorable terms, and with affection as well, is so impressive, because that's, I think, the truest sign of a good leader. We'll miss you.
Trustee Kersman? Anything to add?
Just a little bit, Tim, you're a constant, you're the consummate professional, great admiration for you. I can tell just by the little time I've spent at the Northwest Municipal Conference that your peers think very highly of you, and you've earned the respect of your craft, and I just commend you for your career, and I wish you the very best in your retirement.
Thank you. Okay, so, I think the appropriate thing to do here would be to have a motion to adopt the resolution? And is there a second? So, second. Okay, so now I'll read it, and then we'll do a roll call vote. Whereas Timothy J. Frenzer has faithfully served the Village of Wilmette for 27 years, serving as Corporation Counsel from 1993 to 2009, and as Village Manager from 2009 to 2020. Through his steady and thoughtful leadership, he successfully steered the village through the Great Recession, stabilizing village finances and maintaining the village's coveted AAA bond rating while enhancing resident services. Mr. Frenzer led countless initiatives to modernize village operations and enhance the vitality of the community, including development of the Village Center Master Plan, revitalization of downtown Wilmette, improved solid waste and recycling collection, and critical infrastructure projects such as the successful West Park Sanitary Storage Facility project. And whereas Timothy J. Frenzer, during his 27 years of service, has exhibited tireless dedication to the administration and staff of the Village of Wilmette, managed all its affairs with compassion, skill, integrity, and devotion, and provided leadership in the highest tradition of his profession, and whereas the Village Board of Trustees and the community at large wish to recognize the excellent and dedicated services that Timothy J. Frenzer has given during his 27 years of service with the Village of Wilmette, and now therefore be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette, on behalf of all Wilmette residents, does hereby acknowledge and pay tribute to Timothy J. Frenzer for his contributions to Wilmette, and that we further express our sincere thanks and respect for him. And be it further resolved that a copy of this testimonial resolution shall be duly executed and included and preserved in the minutes of the Village of Wilmette Board of Trustees, and that the original of this resolution shall be presented to Timothy J. Frenzer. All right, so I'm going to call for the roll call vote, and then I'll read the last sentence of the resolution, so I'd ask Mr. Bremen to please call the roll. Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Walensky? Aye. So adopted on February 11, 2020 pursuant to the following roll call vote. Now, hang on one second, I have more things here, so. We also have, now I won't read these, I'll spare you that, but we also have here is a, let me see exactly what it is, I believe it's a resolution. It is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Cook County, Illinois, sponsored by the Honorable Larry Sufferton, and it is signed by both Commissioner Sufferton and President Precklingle, so this is a, also. And then, from the Illinois Senate, we have a proclamation presented by Senator Laura Fine congratulating on his retirement Timothy J. Frenzer, and it is dated the 14th of February, which is your last day on the job, and so that's proclamation here. And our proclamation has been framed as well. Finally, as is our tradition with longtime members of the staff or the Board, we do have this wonderful Crystal Cove gift, and it's a picture, if you can, you can't see it, but I don't know if the TV can focus, and it looks like it's the Baha'i Temple and the lakefront, and it notes your name and your service as Corporation Counsel and Village Manager. So I will present all of these items to you, and then I know your family's here, so we're going to take some more pictures. So I will, I will give Mr. Frenzer the floor here to make a few remarks.
Well, this is, this is overwhelming, thank you. I think last Friday I commented to those who were there for a reception that we had, that this is one of those moments in life where the words "thank you" just seem so totally inadequate to the task. There are so many people I need to thank, beginning with my family, my wife Kathy, and my daughters Beth and Caitlin are both here tonight. My third triplet, Megan, was here on Friday along with her big brother Patrick, they had to go back to school and to work, but I love them all very much, and without their support through my career, both with the state's attorney and the city, and then with Wilmette for 27 years, it wouldn't have been possible to, to really do what I wanted to do. And I love them very much, and I appreciate all their, their support and their forbearance and their understanding for all the times Dad couldn't be there. I also need to thank the members of the Village Board, both all of you that are here for being so great to work with and such great leaders for the community, as well as the Village Board members in the past, those who were on the Board when I was first appointed Corporation Counsel, they're having apparently exhausted all better alternatives offered me a position with the village, and 27 years later, I'm still here. There's been so many elected officials who are volunteers who have worked so hard for the village, some no longer with us, some still here, some I see across the room. I'm grateful to all of you for your support and for your understanding, and for your commitment to making Wilmette the best place it could be to live and to work. Finally, I need to thank the village employees, my fellow employees, past and present, and I'm grateful that there's many in the room now. Of all the things that were read here, none of that is possible without all of you. I'm not the one who does it, you are the ones who do it. And it's been such a privilege to work alongside people with such a commitment to excellence, to doing their best every day, all the time. We do so many different things in so many different departments to serve the people, and sometimes I know it must feel lonely or isolating, and it's never easy, whether it's the firefighters trying to help someone who's in a medical emergency or in a car accident, police officers helping somebody on the worst day of their life. It could be the water plant operator sitting alone in the control room on holiday. It could be the public works men in a brutal cold trying to fix a water pipe, finding warmth in the bottom of a trench. You all work so hard and do so many different things, but you're all joined together by your commitment to excellence, and it's been my privilege to be the manager, and I'm grateful to you all. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to have a picture with the family? Take your proclamation. Please approach the dais, please. Manager, and that is Mr. Frenzer and Mr. Berman. You going to go down there? You going to do it here?
We will.
Let's go down there. Mr. Adler, you can fire up your phone, your camera again.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am Michael N. Berman, do solemnly swear.
I am Michael N. Berman, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of Village Manager of the Village of Womet.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Village Manager of the Village of Womet.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I will at all times.
I will at all times.
Support the Constitution and laws.
Support the Constitutions and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the Village of Womet.
And the ordinances of the Village of Womet.
And now all the members of the Berman family have to come up for pictures.
Jessica. You going to tell us who everybody is, Mike? Will you please? Huh? Will you please?
Yes, you can sit down, Mom. That's my mom.
Because of baby.
To introduce my family, that's my wife Jessica.
Hi.
Hi, Jessica.
Arch Sullivan, Brody, and Tessa are home, hopefully sleeping. It's way past their bedtimes. My twin sister Nina, my mom Sue, my younger sister Mara, and my dad Jeff, who I think many of the Board members know, maybe some folks in the room, but he was a longtime trustee in Buffalo Grove and a village president as well, and that's how I got interested in this field and I grew up in it, so it's in my blood. But I just want to thank the Board for their confidence in me. I'm really excited to get going. It was really special to have Tim swear me in, so thank you, Tim. It's just a special community and I look forward to a great long ride ahead. So, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the report from our Village Manager. Mr. Frenzer, do you have a final report for the Village Board?
No report, Mr. President.
Next report from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is item five, Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there's no report tonight. Mr. Reese, I think we might be able to get in one more item before, you know, in the next, say, 15 minutes or so, and that way the students can go at 8:15, 8:20, is that, okay. So we'll move on to, I was, at some point I'm going to let the students go because they've got homework and they don't want to be here as late as we'll probably be here tonight. So we'll move on to our Standing Committee reports. First up is with Land Use Committee with Trustee Barrow.
Thank you, President Polinski. I move that we remove, we lay on the table item 6.11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to remove from the table item 611. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so the item has been removed from the table.
I now move that we approve zoning Board of Appeals case number 2019Z36 regarding 1421 Forest Avenue regarding a request for a 164.23 square foot, 1.77% total floor area variation, and an 84.61 square foot, 0.91% lot coverage variation to permit the construction of a one-story addition in accordance with the plan submitted, adoption of ordinance 202008.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This item actually was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Trustee Dodd had asked for it to be removed from the agenda, so I will turn the floor to her.
Great. All right, thank you. So, yes, I asked to remove this item from consent a while ago, so I appreciate the resident who's here tonight to, and it's been a while for us to come and discuss this item. And I mostly just really wanted to get some opinion from the Board regarding this issue. So, this home was built in 2003, so from my perspective, it's not a new home in the community, but it is a relatively new home in the community. And at the time that it was built, the builder basically built it to maximize square footage. And so, so at the time it was built, it was torn down and the developer used basically the total square footage that they could use. And it did come with a positive zoning board approval, unanimous. But if you look at the comments in the zoning board, most of them indicated, well, there was significant agreement of a couple things. One is that there really wasn't a hardship, but that the request was very small, and so hence that's why they approved it. And I brought this off consent because I think that it's hard for us to approve something without a hardship and then to define kind of what's small. And so, you know, it's, for me, and I've said, stated this before, you know, I'm not in support of variances for new homes, because I believe that our zoning regulations are intended to cover what we think is the appropriate thing that can be done on a property. And so none of the, this home, while it was built about 17 years ago, our zoning rules haven't changed. So, in a sense, if this home were built today and they were trying to do what they were doing, we wouldn't allow it. And so while I recognize that it's small, I guess I'm interested in other Village, other Board members' perspective just on, you know, what makes us comfortable approving this and relative to then setting a precedent that then the next home that might come up that might have been built two years ago is also requesting a variance. And so it's for that reason that I took this off consent and I'd be interested in other Board members' perspectives.
So, I think the zoning board did a nice job sort of summarizing it, and certainly nobody on the Village Board and on the Village staff would suggest that a new home is eligible for variances. And I think this is different, different owner and the like. And at least when I think about variances, and each person can have their own opinion on this, and I'd certainly be interested in Trustee Sullivan's as a former member of the ZBA, you, the amount of hardship is directly correlated to the amount of the ask. So if it's a large ask, you need a lot of hardship. If it's a small ask, a little hardship is acceptable, because in each person's mind, hardship has a different definition. And if you ask Corporation Counsel, what is the definition of hardship, he will tell you, and he can nod his head if he still agrees with this, that hardship is whatever this Village Board says it is. And so, the question of a very small request in the context of sort of hard-to-find hardship, hardship isn't, my parents lived with me, hardship is lots of weird shape, you know, the home was cited before our zoning code, you know, we all know that hardship generally doesn't relate to someone's individual circumstances, but instead is connected to the property. And I think the zoning board was pretty clear in this one where they said, it is a little hard to find the hardship associated with the property, the house isn't that old. But I think they also looked and said, this request is relatively small, very small, I mean, and you could argue that they minimized the request given what they needed versus saying, I want to build two stories, the like. And I think one of the ZBA members actually said, if the request was for two stories, they would have been against it, and I suspect given the comments of the zoning board, they would have been against it. So, my own perspective is that I agree with the way the zoning board came out. But I will ask the trustees, first off, if they want to say anything, and second off, just to be efficient with people's time and the residents' time, if we want to talk more about this, we can do this. If people are inclined to agree with the zoning board, we can call the question and vote on it. So, first off, does anybody want to add anything, or should I, yeah, let me, if anybody wants to add anything to the conversation, please feel free to speak up. And right afterwards, I will sort of straw poll as to where we stand, whether we should call the applicant up or whether we should call the question and vote on the variance. So, would anyone else like to comment?
I would second what Trustee Dodd said about the lack of a hardship. I really, I'm sympathetic to the desire to have an extra bedroom, but that's not a hardship. And when you put it in the context of this being a newer home and the first owner of the newer home, as far as I know.
I don't think it's the first owner.
It's not the first owner?
No.
Sorry, I was mistaken. But a newer home, and we wouldn't allow it if it were to be built today with that extra square footage, I'm just not terribly inclined to approve it.
Yeah, and I think the question is, you know, the reason we have the variance process is to allow for not strict interpretation of the code.
I know.
And that's our, that's our judgment at the end of the day.
No, I do recognize that. But I also put it in the context of the stormwater problems we have. If we keep allowing people to build bigger and bigger properties and covering more and more of the lot with impervious surface, we are going to create a problem that's just going to be expensive for us to fix down the road. And in this particular case, I asked Ms. Berger Rash for the data on the coverage ratio, and it's 54% of the lot is impervious. The, it's a 9,250 square foot lot, and 5,007 square feet of it are impervious surface.
Right, but the variance requested is just the small amount, like the rest of it is allowed.
I agree.
So, okay.
And I might add that I believe the one-story addition is going to be placed on what is now a patio, so that the impervious amount shouldn't be increasing, if I understand it correctly.
And we can check on that if we need a question. Mr. Adler, is that, okay, Mr. Adler is nodding that that is the case. Trustee Kersman?
So, Trustee Dodd, I appreciate the policy question that you're raising, and I appreciate what Trustee Kennedy said. I think my preference is that we address those issues not specific to this case, but reevaluating certain aspects of our policymaking. And I say that because, you know, I'm not sure if this homeowner has necessarily merited the scrutiny and our time committed to it when there have been probably countless other cases similar to this that, you know, have passed through. So, I would like to deal with it because I think it's a substantive issue, and I'm glad that you raised it. I just don't know if we need to deal with it solely in the context of this one property now.
Trustee Sullivan, Trustee Plunkett, anything to add?
I appreciate Trustee Kersman's comments on this. It is hard to isolate this when it is such a small ask and discuss this, and I, you know, we've had countless discussions on this, I know. But in this particular case with a unanimous vote from the zoning board, there is some issue with the garage being so large that does take away some of the square footage. The homeowners now did not build that garage, they moved into a property with a three-car garage. So I would echo Trustee Kersman that, yes, this is a discussion we should be having, but, you know, with the unanimous vote of the zoning board, I don't feel that it's on this particular property.
Trustee Sullivan, anything to add?
I agree. I think this is minimal and it's consistent with what we voted on and supported. In fact, it's even less than what we've supported in other cases where there wasn't a hardship and there was more of a FAR variation, so I can support this.
Okay, so, is the applicant here? I guess not, okay. I wasn't going to call him up anyways. I was just going to ask if there was any further discussion, and if not, I would ask the clerk to call the roll. So, Trustee Kersman?
What is staff's recommendation for how we can have the conversation in a policy manner at a future time?
Isn't that on the Land Use Committee's?
It's on our 2020 Schedule of Goals, and our calendar for this year is to address this at Land Use, so we will be bringing it forth probably second or third quarter of this year.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. This came with a positive recommendation, so we don't need five votes, we just need four votes, a majority of the Board. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion? Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
No.
Trustee Dodd?
No.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Polinski? Aye. So the motion carries, the variance has been granted. So I'll move back to Trustee Barrow.
All other items on consent, Mr. President.
Okay, now is probably a great time for the students to exit stage left. So, thank you all, students, for coming out tonight. Thank you for participating in student government, and thank you for listening to us for 45 minutes. Okay, so we'll move on to the Finance Committee, Trustee Kennedy.
All items on the consent agenda?
Administration Committee, Trustee Dodd.
All items on consent.
Municipal Services Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
We have two items this evening, and the first is item 6.41, which is an update on progress of and discussion of next steps of the neighborhood storage stormwater project including easement, acquisition, contract timing, and scope. And so, I believe, I'm hoping Ms. Berger will, she will talk about that.
Thank you. And I just want to ask Village Manager Frenzer, are you sure you want to miss this?
Didn't he get a free pass to go home tonight?
It's going to be a little...
You always miss something when you're there, love.
So, thank you, Village Board, for allowing us a few minutes to talk about this project. There are no action items that we're requesting tonight. This is all in anticipation of a boatload of requests that we'll have at the next meeting. So, this is an opportunity to ask questions. Mike, my slides aren't advancing for me.
Is your mouse not working? Are they moving on the laptop?
They're moving, they're moving here.
That's very strange. Technical team is coming in. There we go.
There we go. Sorry about that. So, here's a quick overview of what we're going to talk about tonight. We'll discuss the Phase 1 project, spend a little bit of time talking about optimization. We'll get into the specifics of construction. This is a really challenging project, and we want to make sure everybody's aware of some of the major challenges we have in front of us. We'll talk about communication plans, some of the project milestones, go through the budget real quickly, and then touch on the intergovernmental agreements. So here's a map of the overall project, including the optimization. You will recall that the original Christopher Burke report, when the Village Board recommended the neighborhood storage project, showed a reduction in vulnerable structures of 71%. And certainly after the Board made that recommendation, we started with our 30% design plans, and the Burke team, to their credit, and they're here tonight, so thank you, consultants. If you have any questions, they're here for you. But they developed a plan to bring that 71% reduction up to a 98% reduction in vulnerable structure flooding. So this is the overall project map. It's in... It's in four phases, and we are already halfway through Phase 1A, which began in fall of last year, and we'll finish that up in spring. Those are the sewers in the purple circles. The yellow, of course, is community playfield, and the sewers to the south and west of the playfield are part of the base improvements. The sewers to the northwest, which are, I'm sorry, northeast, which are a little difficult to see, are part of the optimization sewers. And I'll go through that a little bit in greater detail. This is the map that shows the vulnerable structures that would remain if the village were to build the base improvement. So you can see the clusters of yellow that are identifying vulnerable structures in a 10-year event. With the Burke recommend, or not recommendation, but the Burke design, we can pick up a lot of those clusters by building sewers to serve those areas. So this is an optimization map that shows where those additional sewers are and how they would be phased in with each part of the project moving forward. So just to focus on Phase 1 a little bit, obviously, we're building a very large 20-acre foot underground storage tank under community playfield. This is a gravity-fed tank, along with about 5,000 feet, a little over a mile, of new storm sewers to get that water to and from the tank. Yes?
Can I have clarification? This is not the shape of the...
This is not, no.
Because I don't want to confuse people and think we've gone back to an older design.
Yes, thank you. This would be referred to as the impact area. So includes all of our storage and material equipment, that type of thing. Along with the physical structure and sewers that we're building, will, the scope of work includes road rehabilitation, fixing the curbs, the sidewalks, bringing it up to ADA accessibility, so there are ancillary improvements as well to this project. The optimized storm sewers, per the Village Board's request, actually, I should take a step back and say, last February, when we brought the optimization plan to the Village Board, there was consensus that we should design the base project and the optimization, as well as enlarge the storage basins as part of our base project, so that we could build into it if we needed to. The additional sewers, however, there was a request by staff to bid them as alternates as we went, progressed through the different phases. So as part of our bid package that's out currently, we do have the storm sewers in Phase 1 bid as alternates. There's one important key, however, and that is, one of the storm sewers actually runs, you can see on the green, I'm sorry, the red is the vault, and coming to the, right out of the east end of the vault is a storm sewer that runs on the north edge of the parking lot for High Crest School. This is an optimized sewer, but we would highly recommend, if the bids come in favorable, that we build that this year, along with our base project. And that's because the, hopefully, the intergovernmental agreement with the school will be in place. We'll have all the components of that construction set up, and it would just make it so much easier to build that as part of our project.
Because otherwise, we would basically have to go back to the schools and have another round of construction, not as significant as this one, but in essence, tear up the parking lot twice.
Twice, exactly. Exactly.
Bridgette?
Yes.
I just, so are you talking about the green line up to Hunter from the...
Correct.
So from the red box, you know, the green line up to Hunter, basically, will actually be on school property?
Right, it's, you can see, High Crest School is that white box just to the east of the red vault area. That's High Crest School, and the pipe we're talking about runs just north of there. East to west. So we estimate the value of that, that small piece to be about $1.41 million. The second component to the optimized sewer branches off to Hunter Road to the north and Washington to the east to serve that neighborhood. This project has a price table of about $1.4 million. This was built with actually two options, and it gets a little bit complicated, but the reason we built in some flexibility in the timing of this is because the contractor will likely have a very difficult time building the community playfield vault and the storm sewers on Washington and Hunter all at the same time. And ideally, we want all that work to take place during the summer recess, so there's not conflict with school traffic. Recognizing that that's probably not likely, and that construction of the storm sewers could bleed into the fall when school's in session, we put a provision in the contract that the contractor cannot work during school pickup and drop-off times, which greatly diminishes their production rates. So our costs could go up because of that. So as an option to that, we said, well, what about, give us a price if we were to actually shelf that, those two sewers and build them next year in the summer, so you'd have the entire summer to do it. So it just gives us more information. We'll see what pricing is better, so we'll be able to come to the Village Board with a recommendation on that.
So let me just back up for a second, just to remind everyone. So when we talked about optimization, we said, let's optimize the underground storage facilities, because we're not going back in to do that later. But we can make a decision on the individual sewers, because those are sewers in the street, and you don't have to build those at the same time in the project. However, in this case, the one sewer you're suggesting should be built as part of the base case, because we really don't want to go in and rip up the school's parking lot a second time. But alternate two, it could be next summer, it could be five summers from now, if that's the decision of the Village Board.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I just want to make sure, and there's an understanding, though, that both pieces, both, the two need to work together in order to fully serve the neighborhood. It's not as though you could build just half of it and get the same benefit.
You don't get, you don't get half the benefit for building half the sewers, because in essence, the feeder pipes are so small that the water won't get there.
That's exactly right.
So maybe saying the same thing, so that, the green pipe going up the driveway of High Crest, assuming we don't do Washington and Hunter until whenever, 2021, is that pipe functional, or is it just sitting there until we make the connection?
It's really not functional until we make the connection, right?
And the water flows through it, but it's not doing what it...
Very modest benefit, yeah. Looking at the community playfield construction itself, a lot of this language is in our intergovernmental agreement with the school district. This is what makes this project so challenging. It's a massive, earth-moving project, massive. And we really have to work within the timeframes that the school district is allowing us to work. So we developed three phases. There was an early access phase, where our contractor would have very limited access through the High Crest parking lot into the community playfield site. It's basically before 7:00 AM, after 4:30 PM. The contractor employee's vehicles could have access throughout the day, but the heavy moving of equipment and materials in and out is very limited during that phase. So what you'd see during that early access phase is a lot of site preparation, installing the fence, the erosion controls, the lighting, things to get our project ready, so that come full access phase, we'll be up and ready to start. So as soon as school ends, which is either June 12th or June 18th, and the reason there's a range here is it depends on snow days.
So fingers crossed, no snow, okay?
Fingers crossed, no snow, and we could really use those extra six days, for sure. So the plan would be, come June 12th, the school district would turn over the High Crest parking lot to the village and our contractors, and we would have full access to get all of our equipment in and out, material hauling in and out, at least through August 16th. The late access phase would be, if we are not able to complete the project to substantial completion, including rebuilding the parking lot, then we would have to go into what's called a late access phase, and that's Plan B. Plan B would be, we would no longer have access to the High Crest School parking lot, because school would now be in session. So we would have to build an access from Birchwood Drive coming down through community playfield to access the park through the, from the north.
Bridgette, do you anticipate during the fall and the late access periods, that the contractor will be working seven days a week?
Thank you, trustee Barrow, and I'm going to highlight that right here in the slide. So just to reiterate, the six weeks of full access are absolutely critical for us to have a chance of building this project within the desired timeframe. And a couple bullet points down, the answer is yes, trustee Barrow. We, we're fairly confident that the contractor will come to us and say, in order to be able to build this project within these timeframes, we'll need to work till 9:00 PM in daylight hours, very likely Saturdays and some Sundays as well.
Yeah, and that's really to accommodate the school's request, which is understandable, that they don't want, you know, big trucks rolling through the High Crest parking lot when the kids are in school.
Exactly.
From safety and, safety as first reason, but multiple other reasons as well.
I have a question. So I'm sure toward the end of construction, you're, you know, trying to cram everything in, is there no leeway between like August 15th and the first day of school? Because I think there's at least 10 days there.
That's a great question, trustee Plunkett. These were the dates that the school district told us to work within, so that's what we're trying to accommodate. Our understanding is their teachers come back on the 16th, and that's when they start filling up the parking lots. So it would be in everybody's best interest for us to be substantially complete and out of their way.
And then I just think that the community, you know, wants obvious assurances, that even if we are working, you know, nights and weekends, that there's absolutely no, you know, quality being compromised in this schedule, because there's nothing more important than getting this right.
Absolutely. And I can tell you, we've handpicked a team of professionals who are going to provide oversight. Every minute the contractor's out there, we'll have some eyes on them, making sure that they're following the specifications.
Bridgette, can you talk about the third-party quality control review we had completed?
Sure. Yeah, just to make sure that we checked all of our bases, to make sure the plans were sound. We hired an engineering firm called Strand and Associates, and the employee working for Strand actually worked for Stormtrap, the company who is supplying the vault pieces for us. And he did a very intensive review, and there were some minor questions and clarifications on the plans that were addressed. But more importantly, they looked at this from a constructability standpoint, and barring any unforeseen conditions, barring any bad weather patterns that would disrupt the production, his feeling was this was very possible to build it in this timeframe. So, but weather does have a, have a large impact on, on the production. So again, just to reiterate, there's going to be a lot of activity during the summer months off the site, as many as 150 to 200 trucks per day hauling off excavated material in order to make room for the new vault pieces. The High Crest parking lot, our commitment to the school district is that we will build it back to what's called a safe and usable condition by the time their teachers come back, August 15th. That may not mean a final surface, but it will mean that we'll get it up to binder, which is the layer just below the final surface, and get it temporarily striped, so that they will have a good condition when they come back to school. If we can't finish, finish it completely by that August 15th date, then we'd have to come back on weekends and put the final layer of surface on and the final, final striping. And all that's laid out in the intergovernmental agreement.
Bridgette, could you speak to the route that you anticipate that the trucks will take when they're coming in and exiting? I'm picturing High Crest. How will that, how will that work?
Yeah, Lake Avenue and Hunter Road are the primary routes in, and Wilmett Avenue as well on the south end. So we made it very clear that only the major routes are where the contractor will have access.
And they'll enter that way, and once they exit, they will leave in that same way?
That's correct, yeah.
And that Hunter that they're going to use, sorry, that Hunter that they're going to use, that's eventually going to be torn up anyways for the new sewer.
Correct.
But we'll do that after all the truck activity?
Correct.
So I just want to ask a question about access through, I think you said it would be through Birchwood Lane?
Yes.
Because it says up there that it would be extremely disruptive to the Birchwood residents, because that's where the trucks would be coming down. But I just want to understand, is there a significant cost to that? And the reason why I'm asking is, I do think we should understand the impact to the residents who live surrounding the school to have construction going on in the evenings and on the weekends? And just want to understand that relative to the impact of just having that, you know, the trucks go down Birchwood and not needing to work so late, you know?
Well, it's not a matter of disruption to the neighborhood that would force us to Birchwood, it's that we would lose our primary route into the school. I think anybody would agree that taking all, like 150 trucks per day down Birchwood, which is so close to the vicinity of those homes, would be much more disruptive than bringing them down Hunter, which, where there's fewer homes and they're further setback.
But the plan is also to try to have the big, I mean, it's, it's going to be disruptive, but if you have to end up there, your hope is that the real serious moving and stuff is all front-loaded to the six weeks. And that was a big part of the conversation with the school board, which is, you know, look, we want to, we want to work collaboratively with you, address your concerns that you have as a school board, and the impact of this project on the school and on the students and on the staff. But we really need to do this this way, otherwise, the only access point is through Birchwood, and during the, the early parts of the project, the peak of the project, I mean, it's, it's going to be disruptive. So the hope is you get most of the disruption done through High Crest, when nobody's there, versus along Birchwood.
So the, there's drawbacks, certainly, to working extended hours and on weekends, but the one positive is, it just condenses that timeframe so much.
Yep, no, that's helpful.
So we're going to hit it hard and then get out. Like all of our construction projects, we are developing a very intensive communication plan. I think the success of this project relies on a very accurate and regular update to our stakeholders, our resident stakeholders, as well as our two most important stakeholders, the school district and the park district. So we are very committed to making sure we have 24/7 access to make sure that their questions are answered, their concerns are met, and these are just some of the things that we'll be doing in order to accomplish that. Project milestones, we have a really big day on Thursday. That's our bid opening at 2:00. So hopefully, it'll be a good day for everybody involved. February 25th, so at the next Village Board meeting, these are the contracts or the recommendations that will come before the board. We'll hopefully have the construction contract, we'll have a resident engineering services contract, the people who will be managing the construction on behalf of the village. Hopefully, we'll have a school district and a park district intergovernmental agreement. Both the school board and the park board met yesterday, and they're working through some questions, so our staff will be working with their staff over the next couple of weeks to hopefully finalize those agreements. In a, ideally, the, both the school board and the park board will approve the IGA prior to the February 25th board meeting. So hopefully, that, that will happen as planned. The resident open house will be in March, and April 6th is when we will break ground.
Will the open house be here or at High Crest?
Probably Public Works.
At Public Works, okay.
Yeah, on the west side of town. We'll likely do it in conjunction with the Phase 1 open house for the Skokie Lake project as well, since it's the same audience. And here's an overall budget. I found this really interesting to put together. The two columns on the right show our budget February of last year compared to our budget February of this year. So we have some real numbers, finally, to input into this table. The first Phase 1A, the 6.4 million, was still conceptual last year. The 4.5 million is an actual as-bid number. So we saw some very good numbers there. Phase 1 is, 20.3 was a conceptual number. The 24 million is based on engineers' estimates. It's the estimate of plans that are currently out to bid, and includes all of the school district and park district requests in the intergovernmental agreements, as well as the optimization.
So, and was the 20 million from February of 19, did that include the optimization?
It did.
It did, okay.
So it's an apples-to-apples comparison. The, trustee Sullivan?
Well, I'm just going to, what drove Phase 2 and Phase 3 down by?
Yes, Phase...
To make, to our, to just be able to make the budget still?
Sure, yeah. I have an answer for you.
Finance guys are suspicious when the numbers are the same. Exactly.
And there's an asterisk.
There's a reason, there's a reason. And they're, they're all conceptual. We haven't done the even 30% design on those, so they're conceptual numbers. But the reason those, the cost estimates went down is because the park district guided us to a pumped tank in those locations instead of the gravity tank. And the gravity tank was more expensive to build. So the downside with a pumped tank is there's more equipment, mechanical equipment, to maintain down the road, but as far as the initial investment in the capital improvement, it went down. went down.
As well as facilities above ground, which our original goal was to have nothing above ground in any of the parks, but the trade-off was, for you guys, I think you recall, was trees, we could go deeper and have less of a footprint, which saved trees, and that was the park district's desire, and it was actually cheaper for us, so we weren't complaining after the fact.
Yeah. So with a lot more information, a year to the date, we're at the exact same number we were. So I guess that's good news.
So Bridgette?
Do these all still have the contingency built in?
Yeah, 20% contingency.
So can you just expand a little bit more on what's driving the increase in the Phase 1 from the 20.3 million to the 24?
Sure. There's, actually, the next couple of slides will show how pieces of that got there. These are the school district requests that were part of the intergovernmental agreement that's being considered. The parking lot resurfacing is something that really makes sense for the village to do. The school district deferred their parking lot resurfacing because of our project. So if we're already there putting together the pieces that we broke, it makes sense that we resurface the rest of the lot. They've also asked for air conditioning temporary because the windows will be closed because of noise and dust, and so that's just a temporary accommodation. We're working very close to their buried fiber optic line, so they asked for a wireless communication line just to make sure that they don't lose connection.
Between Highcrest and the junior high?
Correct, yes, thank you. The $40,000 is for the replacement entry sign. We will, our hall road takes out their entry signs, so we have to replace that. Our trucks will be driving very close, fully loaded trucks, to the foundation of the Highcrest school, so they asked for some vibration testing just to make sure that we're not damaging the structure, and then cameras and lighting in the park for safety and security.
If I can jump in here real quick. First, I'd like to acknowledge and thank our partners at the school district and the park district. They've devoted countless hours to studying a project that is not theirs and is not central to their core mission, and they're working really hard with us to get to yes, but they have a lot of serious and legitimate concerns. And so this is still an evolving process. The school district met yesterday with, at a committee of the whole. They had four remaining concerns with the draft IGA. One of them could potentially drive our costs up here. They are looking, asking us to look at a redesign of the north parking lot that is likely problematic, given the type of timeline. They want us to work within and be out of their property by August 15th, but we're doing our best to see if we can come up with creative solutions. So there's the possibility this number could change as we come back to you in two weeks, because we do want to give a good faith effort to the school district and see what we can do to try to help their circulation if possible. And then if, Bridgette, if you can go to the park district slide. Bridgette will walk through these, but the park board also met last night and also had some concerns that we can work through. Their most significant concern was the location of Manhole and Catch Basin facilities on the playing fields, which would make it very difficult to have soccer fields or lacrosse fields if you have some type of above-ground structure there. So our engineering team is working directly with their engineers to try to reduce those or relocate those, and that is going to be an important issue for them as we move forward, and it may delay our approval of the park district IGA by a couple of weeks as we get that resolved. In general, though, the park district was comfortable with the numbers that are proposed in this table and the village's commitment to making these improvements at the parks. They are asking their engineers to review our estimates, so these figures came from our engineers. So those numbers may change slightly when we come back to you for IGA approval, just to make sure that all parties agree that the proper dollar amounts are allocated so that we can complete each project.
A number of residents have spoken at our meetings about public restrooms in Thornwood Park. That is a matter I'm going to assume that should be taken up by them with the park board?
Absolutely. The park board's talked about it in public meetings, and they intend to continue those discussions as we get closer to design of Thornwood Park. I know the park board wants to work with the neighbors on the location of the above-ground structure, and that will include continued discussions of a bathroom.
Stay on bathrooms. Why is the bathroom in Community Playfield 200,000 more than Thornwood?
Utilities. It's, the location they originally shown was very central in the middle of the park, so it'll take longer utility runs to get access to the bathrooms.
And same thing, why is landscaping so much more expensive than the other two parks?
It's size. It's strictly a function of square footage.
So. That's right, Bridgette. When you said originally that, you know, when we had our prices for Phase 1, and I think you said that that included the park district and the school, I'm going to assume that the park district, you know, for Hibbert Park and for Thornwood, was that not included in that Phase 1, or are you including all of this upfront?
This estimate right here doesn't, for Phases 2 and 3, does not, I'm sorry, it does include the park district's requests.
Okay, so they are per park?
Yes.
We're not paying ahead of time?
Correct.
We're not?
I envision the way the IGA will work out is as the park district builds the improvements, the village would reimburse them.
Some of the improvements will be built by the village, depending on the timing and the type of project. Some will be an allowance to the park district that we'd reimburse when completed.
So I just, in our original conceptual numbers of February 2019, did we not project any of the estimated requirements of the IGA from the park district? Because I thought we did include that initially in our estimate.
We didn't have those figures. We had a contingency.
So we didn't include them at all?
But we didn't include them. And Bridgette, wasn't the 1.2 million added after February 19th for the second underground reservoir?
Right.
So the 68.2 from February 2019 doesn't have the park improvements in it?
It, I'm sorry, it does, it does not. The current one does.
Okay. So we're still ahead of the game, we're significantly ahead of the game if there's an extra $3, $4 million of expense in the number on the right versus the number on the left?
Right.
And we'll know more Thursday?
Yeah.
It's obviously subject to change based on the bid environment.
And finally, the Willshire and the Wilmett Avenue Truck Sewer have to access Community Playfield via a storm sewer, and unfortunately, we don't have a right-of-way in order to do that. But fortunately, we did find a willing property owner on Meadow Drive who will provide the village an easement, so we will install our large storm sewer from Wilmett Avenue up through Meadow, right through the driveway into the south end of the tank.
It's probably helpful if we go back to the slide that has the green, the blue, and the red on it.
Yes.
So it's the top part of the blue sewer where you have to get from Community Playfield to the street at Meadow. That's what we're talking about.
Right. So that intergovernmental, or I'm sorry, that's just an easement agreement, will be in front of the village board on February 25th for approval as well.
And that will be paid after construction's complete? Or what's the, what are the terms of that?
There's a three-tier payment.
Like a progress?
Yeah, a progress payment. So initial execution when construction starts, significant portion after the construction is, the final construction is completed, and then a one-year layover for about 10% of the contract value, just in case there's no other problems or anything with the construction itself.
So that if we need access?
If we need access again, or if they don't sign essentially a waiver saying that they released us of any issues.
Right. And they've got, they have, I can't remember if we're paying for it or if they're paying for it, but there's provisions for their engineer to review what we're doing.
So, yeah, the private homeowner would pay for their own, any of their own evaluations.
But they have the right to have?
They have the right to have an evaluation.
Yeah, okay.
And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Bridgette, what do you, other than the bid on Thursday, what are you concerned about when you think about the project? Now it's a late-night meeting.
I, honestly, this is the hard part, this right here. The planning part is the most difficult. Once we get a shovel in the ground, we'll get into rhythm, and if the weather cooperates, I don't worry that we'll be able to execute this. I do think a lot of the success depends on getting a good contractor. That's why Thursday, in addition to price, we want to make sure we have a qualified contractor who has the resources available to build the job. And very unique for a construction project, but we also included an interview process so that we have the opportunity to challenge the contractor to make sure that they're able to build the job. So I'm confident that we can deliver this.
So Bridgette, how typical is it for these construction companies to do a project over, you know, seven days a week, you know, for a six-week period of time? And do we have any concern around the quality of the workers on a Saturday, Sunday relative, you know, just, is that typical in this business, you know, given access to these properties and things like that?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's certainly not typical for village projects. Most of our projects are very conventional, Monday through Friday and occasional Saturday. But I suspect these larger contractors who will be bidding on our project likely work for the tollway and IDOT on bridge projects and large earth-moving jobs, so it is not atypical for them to expect that level of effort.
And I take it we won't have quite the time constraints for the second two phases? Since we're not going through somebody's property?
I hesitate to say that, Trustee Kennedy, because we haven't gotten that far with the park district to look at what windows we can actually build this. Because we want to keep the fields that we're disrupting active as much as possible, I suspect we will run into the same challenges, not to this degree, however.
Okay.
And, you know, Thornwood is close to Harper, as you know, and there may be considerations there as well. Hibbert, a little bit less, less so, maybe from a school point of view.
I'm sorry, I have one last question. Has the school board raised any issues about, I mean, or what's their discussion been around access to that park once, access to that area once school starts? So if we're not done?
We won't be gone.
We won't be, and so there, we won't be. Well, is that for sure?
When school starts in fall, we will still be working on the Community Playfield site, restoring the site, backfilling, regrading, putting sod down. And we committed to the school board that we will open the bike path as quickly as possible, as long as we feel it's safe and our trucks won't impede child access to that bike path. But in the meantime, for example, if there's programming, if there's a phys ed class that wants to use the area of Community Playfield to the north of where we're working, we have it in the intergovernmental agreement that we'll have flaggers and spotters at the bike path and make a safe passage for the students as long as they're escorted by a teacher in order to access the other ends of the playfield. So all of that was contemplated and, you know, part of the intergovernmental agreement.
So the IGA right now has three separate phases contemplated, and it's called early access, full access, late access. And that is, at the school district's request, they have dictated essentially which dates that we can do certain things. So there will be some construction activity while school's going, but that's going to be approved or is approved directly by the school board itself, including also the late access, full access. We know that there's nobody at school. We're doing as much as we can, almost everything at that point.
Yeah. Communication is so key. We absolutely will have the school district representatives, whoever, whatever staff they feel is appropriate, to come to our construction meetings, talk about activities, talk about how we can accommodate them to make sure that we're, you know, we're doing the best we can to fit in the same space. So we anticipate working very closely with them.
Bridgette, one follow-up question. So even after school begins, you'll be grading and sodding and a significant amount of that. How will you access the trucks?
Yeah, that's a great question.
That'll be delivering, big flatbed trucks delivering sod. How will they get there?
Yeah, good question. The actual completion date for the vault is November 28th. So there will be, could be work up until November 28th. The contract specifications have a date of August 1st as the date that all the major hauling needs to be completed. So anything they need in order to complete the vault, probably not sod, they could bring that in on smaller truckloads on the weekends if they had to, but any of the major truckloads for excavation purposes, all the Stormtrap pieces, everything to finish the vault has to be delivered by August 1st.
And they would, the sod even coming through with smaller trucks, that would be through the Highcrest parking lot?
So in the late access, we revert back to early access phase, which is before 7:00 a.m., after 4:30 p.m. and on weekends. So yes, that's correct.
It's probably a strange question, but I bet a lot of residents would want to watch this construction project and be really interested to see what's going on. Is that going to be clear as to whether or not residents, you know, have some kind of access to view this giant vault being put in?
We did a camera for West Park, right?
Yeah. And we're going to do some cool, we'll do some video streaming as we're constructing it. We'll have a drone fly over. We'll post that all on the website and push it out on social media, so people will be able to see the progress from above as, you know, so it'll be, we've got some unique things that we can do.
Are we worried about residents coming in from the Wilmett Junior High side?
We, it is a completely protected site, and it'll be locked at night, and absolutely it is not, unless there's a scheduled tour that's guided by the village and the contractor, it is not for residents to visit.
Probably because residents don't have their own hard hats and things like that.
Yes, it's not safe.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Everybody, fingers crossed, bids on Thursday, right? Okay. Any further questions for Ms. Berger? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to Trustee Sullivan.
Have her stay up. We have item 6.42, which is discussion of potential credits to be included in the Stormwater Utility Fee Incentives and Credit Manual.
All right. So we're going to start with a presentation by staff, and of course, I will interrupt because that's what I do, but trustees are also welcome to interrupt with questions during the presentation. Then my thought was that we could have a discussion amongst ourselves to sort of, we've been thinking about this, talking about this for a long time, so we can, the entire board can sort of put some thoughts out on the table. Then I will ask for public comment from anybody who's here tonight that would like to address the board, and then we'll come back to us sort of for a decision on either, we've got a decision on a path forward or we don't have a decision on the path forward, but hopefully we'll come to some conclusions through that process. So I will turn, who's leading this one?
I'm going to do it.
Okay. I'll turn this over to Mr. Berman.
We got it, Eric? Okay. So just some quick background here. As the board and the community knows, we implemented our new Stormwater Utility Fee to pay the debt service associated with the Neighborhood Storage Improvement Project effective January 1, 2020. We are in process of sending out the first quarter of residential bills. We put out, I think, three cycles to date, two. Finance Director Melinda Malloy tells me it's two cycles, and we're working with residents as questions arise. We did decide back in December to hold any billings for non-single-family properties as we contemplated credits. Non-single-family properties includes all commercial properties, institutional, which includes houses of worship or private schools, as well as multifamily. So any townhomes or large apartment or condominiums are included in this non-single-family category that has not received a bill to date. Just to clarify, all these entities will receive a full bill for the year, so once we make our decisions, they'll receive a first and second quarter billing for the second quarter in April or May of this year. So since November, the Municipal Services Committee has held three public meetings to take public feedback and comment on this and to contemplate potential credits to offer to both single-family and non-single-family properties. These on the screen here are the three credits that were considered. The first was an educational credit. This was something Raftelis had brought to us previously. The city of Peoria recently implemented such a credit of $5 per student in their community. Ultimately, the committee decided not to recommend implementation of such a credit, primarily for three reasons. One, our schools are already dealing with significant state and federal mandates in terms of their curriculum, and this was, would just be an additional mandate on top of that. The village would have an increased administrative burden to review, manage, and approve curriculum. And there's really, you know, we couldn't find any empirical evidence that demonstrated that these types of educational credits lead to stormwater management best practices.
And Mike, we keep referencing Peoria, but that was because the public schools were not exempt. They were, they were going to participate in the storm?
Correct. They did not exempt their public schools. So the committee then moved on to MWRD detention credits. And what this is, is for any property in town that has previously or moving forward installed essentially- installed essentially underground detention in compliance with the Water Reclamation District's watershed management ordinance. And the thought being that had, has a property invested in the development of their parcel and as a component of that been required to install the detention, they have made a significant improvement to the sewer system. It's withheld a significant amount of rainfall that doesn't enter the system during a peak event and that they should receive some credit for that. So, the committee did study this, ultimately reviewed, recommended that the village implement an MWRD credit program. However, the final amounts of that credit are still being, you know, are still up for discussion, and there was comment at the committee meeting that we would be giving a credit for entities that are simply required to meet the law, which is the case. And then the final and third credit that the committee looked at were institutional credits. And these are credits for institutional and 501(c)(3) properties. The committee did not make a recommendation for or against this, but wanted to bring it to the village board for further discussion. Bridgette, can you just come on up and briefly touch on the engineering principles behind the recommended credit levels for the MWRD portion?
Sure. Real briefly, the village staff worked with Raftellus to consider what, what's the appropriate credit for these properties that have invested in MWRD detention? And in all cases, we do not recommend a credit more than 50%. So, using 50% as the benchmark, that would be the maximum credit if somebody were to follow the 2020 MWRD ordinance, which is currently the most restrictive as far as the volume of rainfall that a property would have to accommodate for 100-year, 24-hour rainfall. Working backwards from that, we came up with this helpfulness rating, that's the HR column in the middle, and that's based on rainfall. So, you can see that there were three iterations of the MWRD Watershed Management Ordinance starting in pre-2014, and then in 2014, there was a variation of the ordinance followed by the 2020 adoption. With each variation, the amount of rainfall that has to be accommodated in detention has increased. So, based on those increases, we developed the helpfulness rating, and the credit percentages are ratios based on that helpfulness rating. So, it's, the 50% is a little bit arbitrary in how that was established, but 35% and 45% are based on the increases in rainfall that that detention is accommodating.
So, my understanding of the MWRD regulations, all three of them, just at different time periods, they had different calculations, but in essence, that's the equivalent rainfall of a 100-year storm for 24 hours.
Correct.
So, a lot of rain.
It's a lot of rain.
And this project is engineered to a 10-year storm, and so if the project is working within those parameters, the, the properties, and it's complicated as, you know, we all talked, but I'll try and simplify it. Just because a property has been subject to the MWRD ordinance doesn't mean their entire property has been subject to the ordinance. I think Mr. Manish referred to it as the development area. So, whatever the development area of these larger parcels would have that related to it. But for that development area, that portion of the property, the reality is if they're holding 100-year storms' worth of water during a relevant storm event where this project is designed to, you know, to provide benefit, they're not releasing any, there's next to no impact from these properties on the system. That's an accurate, fair statement of my understanding? Or is my understanding accurate?
There is a greatly reduced impact because there's, there's a slower release to that stormwater compared to the pre-development.
Right. They have to trickle, they have to trickle it out.
Exactly.
And they have to wait until the storm event is over before they can release it at a faster pace. So, I mean, you could make an argument that, you know, you said 50% is somewhat arbitrary, and my understanding from talking to staff is that is the level that others have used. But you could make an argument that it should be higher if, if, because arguably, and this is obviously sort of for illustration purposes only because it couldn't happen, but arguably, if every property in the village retained a 100-year storm worth of water on their property, we wouldn't even be here today because there'd be no reason to expand the sewer system because everybody would be holding all that water back. Now, that's a fantasy, that can never happen. You know, you can't build that kind of storage on residential, it's cost prohibitive, et cetera, et cetera. But so, from a theoretical point of view, and, and look, I, as, as the village board may know, I've challenged staff on, you know, like, I want to understand the engineering for this. There are other factors which we can talk about later where it's not zero, it shouldn't be 100% credit, but I could make an argument that maybe it should be 60%. I don't think it ever goes higher than that. Maybe it could be 55%, and we can talk about that later. But, but I think it's really important that we just don't pull a number out of thin air and that we, we have some engineering support for that. So, I don't know, I mean, Bridgette, you know, you know my line of reasoning here. I don't know if it makes sense to wait on that. Probably makes sense to wait, but...
Sure.
Okay, we'll wait on that.
Could I ask a question? When you talk about 100-year storm, it's my understanding that that definition changed fairly recently?
The definition of 100-year storm hasn't changed, but the rainfall data has changed with an adoption of the new bulletin.
From what is 100-year storm?
Correct.
So, ours is not, as I understand it, is not engineered to the current?
That's correct.
It's engineered to the past standard?
That's correct.
Okay.
Don't the increasing numbers from the MWRD ordinance reflect sort of the change in recent rainfall? That's why they've gone up? Or is it just them tightening?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, the 2020.
Right, right.
If I, I just have a quick question, too. So, the 50% is based on, you know, a recommendation or a limit of a recommendation, but that number is sort of arbitrary, but the comparison, the 50 to 45 to 35, that's all based on how much retention they have?
Right.
Okay, so it depends on where you start that number?
Exactly.
Okay.
Right, that, yes, I think the logic there is sound in terms of if you said 60 was the maximum number, all those would scale. If you said 30 was the maximum number, they'd all scale the other way.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, on the institutional credits, what the committee had discussed was a two-pronged approach. A property had to be both a 501(c)(3) designated entity as well as an institutional use. And the purpose of the two-pronged approach was that we do have not-for-profits in the community that own land that is used either for residential or commercial purposes. And that's not really the intent of this credit program. So, by satisfying the two prongs, we're making sure that those types of entities receive the credit for their institutional use but not for that residential or commercial component. The next two bullet points are, you know, some of the arguments put forth by these entities as to why an institutional credit may be appropriate. They do provide a valuable service to the community, and they may have difficulty in passing along the cost to users in a manner that is different from a regular commercial entity such as a for-profit business. The finance committee and, I'm sorry, the Municipal Services Committee and the materials before the board have financial analysis that ranges between 5 and 50% of a credit value. This financial impact slide, we really even hesitate to present it because projections are best guesses, and this has a lot of moving pieces and unknowns, and it's going to change on a week-by-week basis as we build out our stormwater utility database, we have collections experience, we have bids that come in on Thursday, we issue debt over the next few years. This is just a very high-level projection. We know the final numbers for this are going to be possibly very different by the end of 22, 2022, when our project's done and we have a better handle on our stormwater utility fee. But the purpose of the analysis is to provide the board with the comfort of knowing that there is flexibility intentionally built into the rate formula for these types of discussions. So, when we were working with Raftellus and building out the rate, we had initially assumed that their recommendation and urging an 8% loss in collection factor. That's because they've implemented hundreds of these fees across the country, and they anticipated this exact discussion. This is not uncommon when a municipality implements a stormwater utility fee. So, that 8% buffer was in there, knowing that we may go down the path of credits like most other municipalities have as they've gone through this process. Really, what the outcome is, is that we have the flexibility with the maximum credits that we're talking about, which when we were looking at this with the Municipal Services Committee, was 50% on the institutional side and up to 50% for meeting the most stringent MWRD requirements, and that includes no cap. So, that would be a combined, you know, potentially an entity could pay nothing towards their fee. We know that's not what the village board is necessarily looking at, but that gives us the comfort in knowing we have additional cushion and flexibility as we go through this credit process, that we are not going to have to increase residential rates more than we're already projecting, which I think is an important point to make, that we know we're going to increase residential rates over the next many years. The rate in 2020 is just the first of, you know, many such increases as we build out the project, as we add in the debt service. And we'll be going back to the finance committee either later in 2020, probably more likely in 2021 when we have more information, and really drilling down into the fee that we're charging to all properties to make sure it's the right amount, that it's not too high, and that we're also staging in those increases in an appropriate fashion. There may be an ability to layer those in over a longer period of time than we're currently projecting. We just don't have enough data yet to make those decisions.
So, the biggest variable here is the project price. And probably the second biggest variable is the interest rate that we're assuming. And so, where, what are we assuming now, and how much cushion do you think we have? I mean, the municipal bond market has been very strong this year, rates have come down. How much, how much room do we think we have there?
We assume 4%.
Come on up, Ms. Malloy. You have to partake in the fun, too.
So, Tim, you get to hear me one more time. So, the analysis right now has 4%, and we're assuming 30-year bonds, tax-exempt. I think one of the things that we might be discussing is, again, the market is performing very well right now, we might actually look at doing taxable bonds. That, that might be something we might consider because rates might be such that they'd be compelling enough that it would be something that we should think about.
And, and what flexibility do we pick up by doing a taxable bond versus a, I mean, other than if the rate's lower, great, we'll take it, but do we pick up additional flexibility in some way, shape, or form in terms of use of proceeds?
Yes, yes. And the restrictions that go along with issuing tax-exempt bonds.
But this is a qualified project for a tax-exempt use of proceeds, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But again, as we go, we go forward and given what the market looks like, and given that rates are as low as what they are, I think it is going to be something that we probably are going to contemplate as we go further along.
But to fund this project or potentially to do things like refund bonds that, you know, refinance debt that can't be advanced or funded or the like?
It would be part of the whole analysis of the, I think...
I would be excited to look at it.
Yes, we need to look at all of this. Yes, you are correct.
Good, all right. And while Ms. Malloy's up here, any questions for her? Because 4% seems high, by the way, for today's market.
For today, but no one would have projected that the market would be looking the way that it is right now.
No, that's right. Interest rate cuts last year would...
Right. It is, in terms of the assumptions that we've layered in for everything, it's a reasonable assumption to have. Market, though, right now is doing excellent.
And keep in mind, we're going to be issuing debt, not just this year, but in '21 and '22.
Yeah, yeah, right.
There's a lot of unknowns.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the last slide while we're at it.
Financial impact?
Yes.
Or the one before? Okay.
No, because you were talking about the unknowns right now, and I feel like the institutional credit, we can, you know, pretty much, you know, list the institutions, but the detention credit, I feel like that number, you know, where did that number come from and how, you know, how much of an unknown is that? We don't know how many properties are going to be asking for a detention credit.
Do we have permit data? How do we do that?
There's actually unknowns in both categories. So, we, we don't know every entity in town that would meet the two-pronged institutional 501(c)(3) approach because we don't know how any, every entity has organized themselves. So, there may be additional entities that come forward. They're going to be of a smaller nature that isn't going to really move the needle, but one that comes to mind would be the Women's Club. We don't know what their IRS designation is, but they may qualify for a credit. All these entities would have to apply for a credit. So, we'll, you know, after a year or two, we'll have a much better handle on that. From the detention side, we don't have all the MWRD permits that date back into the 70s and 80s and even the 90s. So, you know, we've done our best to capture the parcels that we know have MWRD detention, but there certainly may be more out there that we haven't identified yet that would come forward with a credit program. But I don't think there's the order of magnitude that's going to move the number so much that we couldn't do something from a credit perspective.
And if you look at the, I mean, the, the staff gave sort of an extended view of additional potential institutional credits, and, and you're talking about fairly small numbers across the board in particular relative to, I mean, Melinda, at, at peak, what's our debt service here? How many millions?
Current?
No, I mean for the project. So, how much, how much total stormwater fee revenue are we looking to raise to pay back debt?
I think in a maximum year, given what we've put together right now, it's roughly around 4.6, 4.7 million.
So, 4.6, 4.7 million of revenue needed to pay back the bonds, and in the scheme of that, the, you know, the $5,000 credit here and there isn't going to move the needle, I think, is what Mr. Berman is saying.
So, the last slide of our presentation, just laying out the decision points for the village board. And I'm noting that we're requesting decisions by early March. If we're not at that point, we do have flexibility, we can find a way to build out the non-single-family database and potentially carve out these properties that we're still considering, but really, we'd prefer to get this moving and bill everybody in the second quarter because then we have better information as we're making more decisions on our rates moving forward. So, the first decision is whether to offer an MWRD credit. If we decide we would like to do that, then we need to...
Detention credit.
MWRD detention credit, yes. If we decide to do that, then we need to determine the value of the credit. And then the next decision is whether to offer an institutional and 501(c)(3) credit. If we decide that's appropriate, then we need to determine the value of the credit. And the last component that the Municipal Services Committee also discussed but didn't come forward with a recommendation was whether to have an overall maximum credit for entities that may be eligible for both, the MWRD detention and the institutional 501(c)(3) credit. It's not a huge list, but there are entities that are institutional uses that have made improvements over the last several years that have had to meet those MWRD detention requirements.
Okay, any further questions for staff? My thought was, was to sort of kick off a discussion amongst ourselves, but first, any further questions for the staff? And they're not going anywhere, so if they come up, you can ask them later as well. Okay, so trustee Sullivan, you're Chair of Municipal Services. I guess I'll ask you to sort of kick it off, and then we'll roll from there.
Well, I mean, first of all, as was highlighted, we had three municipal services meetings. I think they were very productive, very well organized, very well done, and best of all, we got some good comments, as we talked about. I think residents are starting to understand this project is real and, and understanding the cost, as well as, you know, some of the, obviously, institutions impacted by this. They had no idea. So, you know, I think we did a very thoughtful process and a lot of education, a lot of analysis, which we all saw, and hopefully people saw that. I'm going to continue on my last comments at the last municipal services meeting, which there's really three areas that I'd like to focus on or where I've been focusing. And the first is regarding what I had said at the end was to support giving a credit to the 501(c)(3) organizations that are located in Willmet up to 50%. I can support that. What I did say, or where I'm going to amend what I said, is I don't, I don't feel we should cap that at the 50%. I'm supportive of they, all 501(c)(3)'s getting a 50% credit, as well as if they do work on 100% or partial of their property, get a detention credit. You know, I use the numbers in my analysis that Bridgette and team used with the 35 to 50% and saw the impact. But I think it's important that we recognize that when they do work, and I know it's a legal obligation when they do work, that they have to make these improvements, but the fact that we're encouraging them to continue to do the work, it's going to be less burdensome on the, on the system. My rationale on this is what I had said there at the last meeting. First of all, these not-for-profit institutions are very important to Willmet. I think we like them, we want them, this is part of a fabric of our town, it has been historically. Our residents want to be able to use whatever these institutions are, whether it's religious schools or other organizations. I think they're important. We use, we actually advertise them on our website, so when future residents are coming in, they can find opportunities of where to go to something of, of interest. I also felt that this was a little bit more, provide consistency with what I supported, was we exempted the public schools, which I understand was, you know, to, so we didn't feel like we were double taxing them, but, you know, those schools are still contributing to the stormwater system, and so, you know, to exempt them, and we heard it in the minutes that they said, you know, if we do have to shoulder the burden of this additional cost, they're going to have to cut back on services. They couldn't just pass it along. So, you know, those public schools are important to us, just like I think these institutions. So, that brings me, it feels like it's a little bit more consistent to me. You know, I ran the numbers. I think we're going to, we're going to continue to get better data. I think the model that Melinda and Eric have built is very well done. Unfortunately, we're still learning the overall, you know, what are the true ERUs, but I think there's enough cushion in here that, you know, we can, you know, given the dollar impact, which is minimal, we're not going to, by taking away or giving these credits, I'm at the very high watermark, doesn't mean it's going to shift the... these credits, that's a very high watermark. Doesn't mean it's going to shift the, the burden to the residents. It still is the same. So, I didn't feel like we were making a shoulder more to the burden of, of the residents on that side. The other part I mentioned is, you know, a lot of what we require for these 501(c)(3)'s is driven by our Village Code. They have a lot of, you know, we want them there, and we want to encourage them to be well-attended. And to be well-attended, you need parking lots. And yes, I know we can update parking lots and whatnot, but our Village Code sort of demands, and I, I think I made the off-the-comment, like, they could remove the parking lots when we park on the, on the streets. We don't want that. Plus, our Village Code doesn't allow it. So, for me, this is a little bit of a combination. Again, I ran the numbers and would support, my first discussion point is to support those two, with the 501(c)(3) credit as well as a detention credit, and no cap.
So, I just, I want to add one thing for, for people's thoughts, and then I'll ask someone else to speak. But if you think about the detention credit for a second, isn't there something sort of inherently unfair to force someone to make improvements for stormwater detention, and then to charge them a stormwater user fee that ignores the fact that the improvements were made? Doesn't that sort of seem unfair to people? And I understand the law compels them to do it. But the reality is, as, as Bridget and I were talking, the improvements basically, if everybody did those, and it's impossible that everybody could do them, we wouldn't need this project, because they're holding back enough water. So, there's sort of this, to me, it's sort of unfair to say, you must do this, but I'm going to charge you a fee, by the way, that ignores the fact that I just made you do this. And I, the government as a, as a broader entity. So, that's, to me, that's like the most compelling argument on, on a detention credit, is it just doesn't seem fair that you make someone make improvements, you, they reduce the impact to the, and then you charge them an impact fee based on ignoring that. So, I'll, I'll, I'll stop there. But that, but that, that was my sort of big-picture thought on detention that I wanted to put in people's heads. And I'm happy to go if nobody else is ready to go. I'm happy to talk. But, you know, you guys all know I can use up the oxygen in the room.
We can focus on this one. The other, only other two points I brought up and I talked to staff about is, if we do this 501(c)(3) credit, I would like to find a way that some of that fee that we collect, a portion of it, it can be, I would ask staff to look at this numbers and run this, because I, it was hard for me to do in the analysis. But from what we collect from the 501(c)(3)'s, I think a portion of that fee, if we could find a way to contribute a certain percent to Willmet Housing Our Own, whether it's 5% or 10% or some dollar amount, that we would instruct Willmet Housing Our Own to be used. Those specific funds could be used for any residents that are experiencing a hardship when they see these bills. Again, it's, it was an idea of, you know, how do we help shoulder this? And how, you know, ideally, the 501(c)(3)'s maybe donate specifically, but this is a way that we can give back. And then the third one, which is not related to these credits, but it was sort of in the second to last page, and I know Mr. Berman addressed it, and Melinda's going to cringe. But, you know, when we see over-reserved by half a million dollars, I just want to make sure that, you know, once this settles out, we have a policy that we are not over-reserving significantly by this dollar amount. I think, you know, we've talked about being over-reserved. The intent here is not to be over-reserved or recommended.
Right. Because at least at this point in time, and this may change, but at this point in time, this revenue stream is solely dedicated to the bonds in this project. Now, 20 years from now, there may be maintenance and the like that may go with this, and we may phase out the old sewer fee completely. I heard a staff member say that in a meeting, so I'm coming back-
Did I say completely?
15 years from now to see how the sewer fee is doing, the old sewer fee. But, you know, right now, the, the costs in this fund are fairly predictable, so you wouldn't need to over-reserve for unforeseen issues, because we're just paying back bonds. We sort of know what the costs are.
And that's the benefit of the stormwater fee, is the stability of it. If you were looking at the, putting this on the sewer fee like we had discussed, we may want to over-reserve a little bit for years when we don't sell as much water. That's not a factor here. So, that is something we are committed to bringing to the Finance Committee. It's just a matter of late 2020 or '21, when we have more information and better information for you.
Nope. I just wanted to say, and again, I know you both had a good reason for it in years one and two, but as we get better data and better understanding of the bills and the costs, the goal is not to be over-reserved, to build a cushion here on this one. So, those are my three.
I guess I'll-
Trustee Barrow.
I certainly concur with the thinking regarding the education credit. I think that that's something that, that doesn't get us very much and is fraught with unknowns. And I don't think that's something that, that we ought to pursue. I am in agreement with the concept of the detention credit, because the entities that do that actually have done something. They've done something very significant, probably something very expensive. And yes, it was required by law, and for a while I was hung up on that concept, that why are we rewarding someone for doing simply that which they were required to do? But in fact, thinking about it in a little broader, bigger way, they actually are contributing in a very real, significant way to the stormwater management. And, and that should be acknowledged and acknowledged by the credit. What the appropriate amount is, you know, we'll figure that out. But conceptually, I think the detention credit is something that I would support.
And I'll, I'll give you a pitch on what my number is when I talk.
I'm, I'm wrestling with the institutional credit, and, and I'm not real comfortable with that. And I say that because when I think of the discussions that we've had about credits, whether they be residential or institutional, we've focused on people and property owners doing something, doing something to mitigate the, the contribution that their properties have to our stormwater property. We haven't focused on a property owner in their particular status. We focused on what, what they can do to reduce the impact. What we're doing if we adopt an institutional credit is that we're providing a, a financial advantage when they haven't done a thing. They're not obligated to do a thing. And what I'm not entirely following is that if we provide a credit, if they pay less by virtue of their credit, seems to me someone pays more. If the idea is we take it from the reserves, well, that pot was created by someone. And that someone are the homeowners. That someone are the residents. And what we're saying in so many words is that we're asking the residents to subsidize these institutions. And I agree with Trustee Sullivan. Sullivan. Ooh, thank you. I hate that. I agree with Trustee Sullivan that these are important institutions. You look at the list, and there's a lot of them. And that's terrific. They are part of the fabric of Willmet. But they're also contributors to our stormwater problem. And I understand that some of them may be in difficult or precarious financial states. But that doesn't necessarily follow that the rest of the residents of Willmet should be subsidizing them by reducing the, the amount that they pay for their contribution to our stormwater problem. So, I, I'm wrestling with that, because there is certainly a part of me that appreciates what these entities do. But in this instance, they're not doing anything to mitigate their contribution to our stormwater issue. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm really not on board with, with a credit to any entity based on their status, based on their doing something. I, I, that makes a great deal of sense to me. But not simply because who they are. And it seems to me every other resident is paying for who they are. So, I'm, I'm really not, I just don't know about that one. I'll just say that much.
That's a fair, oh, go ahead. Well, it's fair, and, and I wrestle with that, too. And so, that's why I come back to the consistency of doing something. And you, you said, you know, they're contributors of, to the stormwater. Our schools are contributing to the storm, the system, and we exempted them. So, are we saying the same thing, and I'm asking Trustee Barrow for his response, are we saying the same thing? Are we treating them, why are we treating them differently than the schools that are contributing?
I-
But I'm asking Trustee Barrow. I'd like his response.
And I'm not sure of the answer.
Right.
You know, certainly in my mind, we exempted the schools, Park District, the library, because they were simply going to turn around and tax and take that basically from a different pocket of the residents of Willmet. And, and for that reason, to me, it didn't make sense to sort of jump through that.
Which most likely these organizations will do, too.
Right.
In a different fashion.
In a different fashion, but yes.
Or they detract from their mission.
Correct.
And so, the question is, do you value the mission? If you, and I think part of the, the rationale with District 39 and District 37, at least, was because they're tax-capped, they can't raise the revenue, and we value their mission. So, we don't want them to track from their mission, because they couldn't pass it along. They couldn't, the reality is, they're not going to take it out of the taxpayer's pocket, because they're already taking as much as they can under the law. And so, what they would do instead is they would reduce their mission. And I think we said, we don't want them to reduce the mission. By the way, it is easier, because at the end of the day, the funding comes from the same source. I agree with that.
And these are, these are, these are, these are public entities. These are, these institutional credits, these institutional entities.
They're private entities.
They're private entities. People choose to belong to them for any number of good reasons. Maybe some prosper, maybe some don't. But I don't see that it's the responsibility or the obligation of the residents of Willmet to support them, which is not to take away one iota of the value that they provide to our community. But that doesn't mean that, that it's our obligation to support them.
Trustee Kennedy, you look like you wanted to say something.
Yeah. I, I think, I don't think there's a direct analogy between the public schools and, and, and other school, private schools, because, because everybody is potentially a user of the private schools, and the money for, I'm sorry, for the public schools. And all of the money for the public schools comes from residents across the village. Private institutions, only some people go to it, and they have other sources of income. So, it, it doesn't fall entirely on the entire village to support an institution that the entire village can't go to or won't go to.
Yeah. And I don't think, I don't think we're talking about 100% credit anywhere in this. The question really-
Well, we start stacking them up, we get pretty close.
Yeah. But I think the detention credit's very different, very different, because the money was spent, and again, to, I, I just think there's a fairness argument on detention.
Yeah.
You can, you can debate both sides, I think, of the, of the 501(c)(3) or the not-profit institutional credit. No doubt about it.
But I'm not arguing about the detention credit. So, if, if you were to separate into the three pieces, I think we've already taken the-
Yeah, I don't think anybody's talking about the education.
If anybody doesn't feel that way, they should, I think, speak up quickly. But I think we should take it off the table. With respect to the detention credit, like Trustee Barrow, I'm not usually in favor of rewarding people in any way for doing what the law requires them. But this is different, because this, they've, they've done something that has a direct and immediate benefit to us, and this particular kind of project. And so, I, I think that it is appropriate to give detention credits. And even though there's a little guesswork in, in the 50%, I, we don't have anybody in that category yet, because they haven't, I guess those things haven't all been in effect for very long. But I, I still think that that's a reasonable way to look at the detention credits, and I would entirely support detention credits.
Let me, let me, can I, go ahead, Kennedy.
Yeah. Can we maybe just, can we separate them just for a little bit and have a little bit of discussion? Because I'd like to ask some questions about detention credit, if that's okay, because-
Okay. Let me give, can I give you my pitch on detention credit then?
Yeah, sorry.
So, because I really, I really pressed the staff to come up with an engineering justification for 50%. Because again, you could start at the point and say, it should be 0%. You know, these guys aren't using the incremental facility that we're funding this way. But a couple of considerations here. One is, and I asked the staff, they approximated, the amount of impervious surface that's right-of-way, village right-of-way, is about 30%. So, everybody has to pay for the 30%, because the villages, you know, we all share that infrastructure. Okay? So, you shouldn't go, you've got to pay at least 30% of the bill, right? And then, you know, look, you're hooked up to the system, right? You're, you're using, you may not use it at peak, but you're using it. So, presumably, you should share some burden, you know, don't, don't think of it, think of it sort of like, you know, airplane tickets, right? If you fly off peak, you get a cheaper fare. If you fly peak, you've got to pay more. And the question is, what's, what's that amount? And I certainly, you wouldn't think that it's less than 10%, 15%. You might say 20%, by the way. If you say 10%, 15%, then your max credit is like 60% or 55%. Or if you say 20%, it's 50%. So, I felt pretty good that somewhere between 50% and 60%, there was a lot of justification from an engineering point of view, that even if you held all your water and you held it forever, I mean, I guess if you, if you held it forever and you sent it somewhere else, there actually is an exemption for that.
There is an exemption.
But if you held it forever and just trickled it out really, really slowly, you're still using the system, so you need to contribute something. And by the way, you've still got to cover the 30%. So, that was my rationale for saying 50% makes sense. Maybe it should be a little bit more. I'm not overly committed to more, but I think it justifies the 50% quite, quite reasonably.
Do you mean 50% even down to the pre-2014 level?
I, I, no, I, I, I mean, arguably, you could. But I think, I think this, this sliding scale, I think, I would suggest 50% for the 2014 and go, go and scale it off of that. That would be my suggestion. So, that there was, the upside was in the 2020, not the 2014 one. You could make an argument that it could be that low, but I do think you want to, I, I think, I think it does make sense to differentiate. So, I mean, you make an argument that they all should be the same, because reality is from, but I don't think that makes, I wouldn't make that argument. I would, I would keep sort of a scaled thing. So, sorry, Trustee Dot, I interrupted your, you were about to talk, and I said, let me give you the pitch, and then now you can-
So-
I've been struggling with this. I really have. The engineer in me and the finance guy in me have melded here on this little project.
Bridget, actually, I have a question for you. Just, so, I think it's important when we think about this from, from my perspective, to just be some consistent around what we're doing for, for non, for single-family homes and non-single-family homes, as we think about this. So, my question to you is, are there any MWRD-like things that we expect residents to do on their property? Do you understand the question I'm asking?
Sure. You've heard of VMP's Best Management Practices, that we encourage homeowners to do, in some cases, require them to do as part of a permit process. But that is on a very different scale than providing MWRD-compliant detention. So, while a resident may install a rain barrel and a bioswale to help capture and infiltrate some of the stormwater on the property, that's very different than installing a large underground storage vault that picks up all the impervious area for a major rain event and stores it under, underground.
If a resident were to do that, though, they could apply for the credit.
They could absolutely, yes. They could.
Okay. So, that's what I want to make sure. So, this credit is, we're calling it an MWRD detention credit, but it's a, it's, it's, it's a detention credit available to single-family homes as well as non-single-family homes. So, I just want to be careful that we don't get to the point where we're like, well, this wasn't required by MWRD or whatever. Because there are, and I, we don't know if these are accurate or not, but we are receiving some emails from residents that they're spending significant, kind of significant amount of money on their property, whether it's creating, whether it's they're putting in a French drain, whether, whatever they could, you know, whether it's, you know, creating a bios, whatever. I mean, and if, if, if those residents are retaining water on their property, because we're saying, if we're going to put in this detention as well, you know, I, I feel like we need to be consistent. I feel it's only fair. And-
But none of the, none of the residential properties come anywhere close to retaining this much water.
Right. But that's because they don't, their, their properties are much smaller. So-
I know. But even, no, even on rainfall amounts, you just, I mean, you can't, I, it's cost prohibitive on a residential property to build 100-year storage, like the tank and the depth and for your, for your $2,000 a year stormwater fee.
Okay.
They, they just can't match it. And by the way, none of the, none of the institutional guys would do it if they weren't forced to do it, because there's no, the return on that is, I mean, these are-
And for that reason-
Okay. That's what I'm asking. Okay, that's why I'm asking this question, right?
Because of the cause, the village does not have a single-family residential detention requirement.
Okay, so this is actually only an MWRD detention credit?
No, not exactly.
That's what I'm asking.
It is available to all projects.
It's, it's available, but currently we do not require it of, for example, a tear-down and a rebuild. We do not require that level of detention.
For reference purposes, Weneka's stormwater fee's been in place for about five years. They have a similar residential type of credit that we're looking at. They've had one property owner qualify, and that was an individual who wasn't as focused on the cost, but was focused and committed to green improvements on their own property. So it's there, it's an option, it's unlikely to be used by, you know, a single-family property, but Willmet Circle's an example where a newer development of multiple single-family homes does have to meet village requirements that match the MWRD and then would be eligible for a credit. So they could apply for, what, a pre-2020 credit, potentially?
I don't recall the year, but, but it has to be more than green improvements.
Right, they've got, they've got to hold the water.
Yeah, we have a lot of homeowners who install these best management practices to manage the stormwater on their property. That's not what this is. This is actually building a huge tank in your backyard in...
You know, I understand that, but so going back to the Willmet Circle example where they, do they have a retention tank on their property or not, on, not on, on their common area, or, you know?
They have, they have, they have both. They have rain gardens that go along the backyards of the property, and they also have large diameter storm sewers that store that volume in the right-of-way.
So would they be eligible?
Would they be eligible, is my question.
They, they would be eligible. They are MWRD detention, based on the MWRD definition in those homes, in addition to what's provided for in the right-of-way, they do capture that 100-year event.
That's, that's good to bring that, to set that up, Kathy, thank you.
So that was just my question again, just because I think, looking at them consistently. So I guess I just want to say that I, I hear your rationale, President Polinski, and, you know, I, I, I can be comfortable, I can get comfortable with detention credits. I just want to say that I'm not comfortable at 50% right now, and the reason why is based on my, based on everything I've heard today from Melinda, so much of this is still, we're unsure of, and there's never, there's never going, we're never going down. We're only going, once we decide to do something, and if our costs are higher, if interest rates change, whatever, you know, all, we're, every day, not every day, but you know, as every time we talk, our assumptions change.
But, but we're never gonna have perfect information. This is a decision we're gonna have to make without perfect information. We've made a decision on the other stuff, you know?
Can I just, can I finish what I want to say? I, I, I'm in favor of putting something in place for a year or two, and then once our, once we have better data, once we've done our first project and things, and we know our collection rates, we know what potentially our bond rate's gonna be for the second one, then we can reevaluate it. So that's where I am today.
But, but we can do that anytime. I mean, the question is, if you put, if you put a, I mean, we can change all of this next year, but if you put a, if you put a sunset on it, then what do you say to the developer who's coming to say, what's my stormwater fee gonna be? Well, we don't know. And I think that's a problem. I think you gotta sort of, this is what we think it's gonna be, the best guess we have, and of course it's gonna change because that's the way the world works. That's my, my, my suggestion to your concern about, about...
And I'd say developers might come to us in 2025 and ask us if there's a new MWRD requirement that we have to adjust our rates. I mean, things change.
Right, no, but, but we're in agreement that things change. I'm just saying, that's just part of making a decision, as opposed to you have to sunset it. So anyways, okay. Point, point taken, though. There's a lot of uncertainty here.
President Polinski, trustee Dodd, will you also speak to the institutional credit, or are you not of a mind to do that tonight?
I, I'd wanna hear other trustees' opinions on that first.
Thank you.
So let's stay, we'll stay on detention, that's fine.
Oh, on detention, okay.
Yeah, so trustee Kersman, are you going detention or are you going institutional credit?
Sort of does both.
Fire away.
So, yeah, thank you. And so it was, it was me and the municipal services committee that posed the, made the point about whether we should provide, you know, credit for following the law. So I'm honored by all the time people have spent clocking an opinion on that, so thank you for, for taking that and speaking to it. I think some of the cases made tonight were pretty compelling, actually, and it's not so much that I'm, you know, withdrawing my, my sentiment on that, but I'm willing to be flexible on that, but only if there's a cap on the overall credit. And so, and I think my reasoning is very similar to what trustee Barrow articulated. I mean, I'll just put it a little bit differently. I mean, this is a financing mechanism, but it's also a better way to address and to reflect the impact that a property makes on the stormwater system. And, you know, just, I don't want to lose sight of, that we are moving away from water usage with intention because it wasn't reflective of what somebody's imposition would be on the, on the system. And, you know, I, I'd like to see updated numbers with the added institutions here about what the cost would be if we did fund this project purely through sewer rates. You know, some of these institutions would be paying a lot more. I mean, I feel like the stormwater utility is a really good thing for these institutions, and so I do think that in some ways, this is being helpful to them, and I think there, we should, but there needs to be a limit on it. What that is, I'm not sure because of the data that's, and some of the variables that's been spoken to, so I would actually rather not make the cap determination tonight, but I think there needs to be a cap, especially if we're gonna allow the MWRD credit. So those are just some thoughts.
Thank you, trustee Kersman. Trustee Flunkett, anything on detention?
On detention? Because I, I do have a few institutional comments to make, but in principle, yes, I, I understand detention. Honestly, when you look at who is getting detention credits, it's hard because it is those entities that can't afford to build these improvements on their property anyway. And so, you know, some of these entities that you're looking at, you think, wow, do they really need this credit? And I think that's a little bit difficult to reconcile, but I do think that it, you know, it makes sense. I am worried, I mean, the bills are just going out right now, and we don't know how many properties are going, we don't, especially this pre-2014 level at 35%. We don't know how many properties that's gonna be that has those credits. And maybe it's not a huge number, but we also know that in the future, anything that's built is going to qualify for this detention credit. So this, this is not always, this is gonna get bigger as well. I am not decided on my number yet. I would, if Raptellus set a maximum of 50%, I wouldn't want to go over that, especially if you were gonna combine them. But I would also be interested in a phase-in. Right now, the bills are lower anyway. And, you know, if we say 50% off the bat, we are not gonna lower that next year. That just does not seem, that's not fair to do to anybody. I mean, I think developers, you know, if they think that it's a 35%, if they think it's a 45, a 40% credit, you know, that's what their number is going in, and, you know, if that becomes a 50% credit, you know, in a year, maybe we get a grant, maybe, you know, the construction bids come in better on Thursday. I just, you know, property owners want to know, you know, how much they're paying too. I'm just worried about setting this at our highest level today and then, you know, coming back thinking, you know, were we a little too generous?
Okay. Anybody else on detention? Because trustee Dodd, your suggestion was a good one to sort of split them in two. All right. The institutional credit? So let me give you, let me give you my answer, trustee Barrow and trustee Sullivan, or trustee Kennedy, to your question. So the situations are similar and they're different, okay? They're similar from the point of view that the reason the Park District and D-39 and D-37 came to us was because they were limited by tax caps from raising revenue to pay the fee, and paying the fee would result in a hardship, and it would detract from their mission. Now, that's the similarities between the two situations. The difference, which you guys have already said, and I, I acknowledge, is that it's, it's, it's that the units of government, the, the costs are maybe more directly connected to the, to the larger taxpayer base, because the property tax funds these entities at the end of the day. For the not-for-profits, they're here for the same reason. Significant cost to them, they can't just raise the revenue and pass the cost along, and paying a fee would result in hardship that would detract from their mission. So the exact same rationale that we applied for the units of government doesn't apply because you can't say, well, and, and you've said this and it's very accurate, you can't say that the taxpayers are at the end of the day gonna fund it. So the question for the board is, is there a public policy argument for offering a similar credit? And I think there is for the following reasons. First off, several of the institutions do make measurable contributions, which you can quantify, where there are expenses that would have been borne by the taxpayers, but that aren't borne by the taxpayers. Now, by the resident's choice, and they're not obligated to do that in the future, but that is a reality today. And the other question is a little bit harder to quantify. It's like, do their missions make a contribution to the quality of life of our residents? You know, are we, are we better off having these organizations within our borders executing their missions? And if you want to take it a step further, I mean, I, trustee Sullivan said these institutions are in the fabric of our community. Willmet wouldn't be Willmet if we didn't have these institutions on the list. We'd be a different place. I mean, can you even imagine a community devoid of all of those groups? How attractive is that community to our current residents, and how attractive is that to our future residents? And so you could make an argument, and you guys may think I'm stretching on this, but I really believe that the attractiveness of our community drives our property values. And schools are clearly one of the most attractive parts, but it's not the only attractive part of living in Willmet. And the question is, if you had none of these groups, would your property be worth as much as is today? I don't think so. I think that's part of what makes Willmet the community is. You say, well, we've got this, we've got that, we've got this. Yes, it's schools and it's parks and this and that, but it's also all of the not-for-profits that, that play a role here. And I'd take a step further, and I understand there's some concerns about the numbers, but the finance guy in me would say that the projections are materially correct. There are variables that are going to change them, but I'm not concerned about the credits making such a big dent in this. And then the staff has sort of confirmed that right now, there's enough room in the projections that, that these credits aren't gonna make a dent, because the total cost of this credit program within the context of the entire stormwater fee is fairly small. But the stormwater fee to each of these institutions is fairly meaningful. So, so I support the credit because I think it's good public policy. I acknowledge trustee Barrow and trustee Kennedy's comments about you could take the perspective that you're subsidizing them, but I would argue that, that...
Excuse me, I don't think I spoke to the institutional credits.
I thought, I thought you responded to trustee Barrow. You didn't? Okay, I apologize then.
No.
That, that there is, that you could make the argument that there's a subsidy, and I wouldn't look at it that way. I would say you're offering a similar credit for a slightly different reason for what you did with the Park District, District 39, District 37, and the library. And I think it's good public policy, I think it supports people's property values, and I think Willmet without these entities would not be Willmet anymore. It'd be something very sterile, something very different. And so I don't have an issue providing some support. I'm not in favor of 100% support by any means. I don't think these entities should be exempt, but I think there should be an acknowledgement of the, the mission's value inside the community. And I know some of you are gonna disagree with me, but that's my, that's my pitch on why I think it makes public policy sense. I'm happy to have people punch holes in it. Go ahead, trustee Flunkett.
Actually, I'm not, I'm not punching holes in that. And I don't have a number. I have a couple points that I want to make on the institutional credits. When we first got this presentation about, you know, homeowners and tiers and institutions and businesses, we didn't have any numbers. And I think one of the most striking things to me is that when you see these potential bills for some of these institutions, it really kind of hits home. And just for an example, you know, in 2026, the, the potential bill for Regina is almost $20,000. For St. Joe's and St. Francis, it's almost $24,000. For Beth Hillel congregation, it's $11,300. This is real money that these institutions, you know, in addition to all of their operating expenses, would have to come up with. And I think some would have an easier time than others with their congregations, but I think when I saw these numbers, I was like, whoa, okay, now we're actually talking real money. And, you know, do we want these institutions to continue to thrive? And I think as trustee Sullivan said, you know, we've required these institutions to have so much parking. You know, we've got the, you know, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in 2026. You know, it's an, over an $8,000 bill. We know these places have parking lots, and I think a lot of these institutions don't have the money to make these extensive detention improvements, and they, you know, they haven't done additions because, you know, either they don't need to or they don't have the funds to do it. I think, you know, in addition to the argument that, you know, are they worth, you know, what percentage of the public school, you know, are you gonna give Baker or, you know, St. Joe's, St. Francis? One possible money, you know, that we considered in funding the stormwater was property taxes. Now, we obviously did not go with that. We went with, you know, the stormwater utility fee. If we had gone with property taxes, these institutions would pay nothing. They're not, they're, you know, charitable institutions, they don't pay property taxes. If they were, you know, if we had gone with property taxes to fund this, they would not be paying anything. So I, I'm gonna say the same thing for institutions that I said for detention, that I don't know that I'm there at the maximum percentage right now. I would prefer a phase-in for both of these, and I don't think that we have to go over I don't know about this, but I don't think you qualify for an institutional credit and a detention credit. I think they should be one or the other. That, that's my thought. And I don't know that I'm willing to go full 50% today, but I can definitely contemplate that after we know what, we're all paying for this thing.
So the rationale, though, between not doing both?
Because I think you would get over 50%, and I think that in that vein, you know, we all use the stormwater system. And I think that there is a cap as to, you know, how much we're using that stormwater system. And I, you know, that's where I am. Especially because, you know, if you're contemplating, you know, 50% almost max for both, although I prefer a phase-in, you know, you're almost, you're almost there.
Yeah, I think my understanding from talking to staff is that many of the larger property owners aren't gonna qualify for, it says 50% up there, but only, you know, say half of their property would have had the MWRD improvements, so that their actual qualification would be 25% versus 50%. But you're right, if someone actually did get 50% and we made them cumulative, it wouldn't go to, to zero. I think you would multiply and you'd say, your post-detention bill is 50%, and you get a 50% credit, that would be 25%, would be the, the lowest someone could be. Not, I'm certainly not thinking like zero, like you would go 50 plus 50 equals 100, so you go to zero. I'm thinking, you start at whatever your detention number is, and then you would apply if there's a credit for the, for the 501(c)(3). So if someone, let's say someone qualified for, the detention got them 70% of the full bill, and we said 50% was the institutional credit, again, we haven't said that, but for sake of illustration, then it would be 35% in my mind. That would be how you would do a cumulative. You would never go to zero. You would definitely never go to zero. I think, I don't know, trustee Sullivan, is that what you're thinking?
I think that's what, and that's what I ran my analysis, so assuming just, if the stormwater fee were 100... So, assuming just if the stormwater fee were $100,000, and they were at the 2020 MWRD standards and the 50% for the entire property, which I think that's what you were saying, president Balinski, they're not, most of those are not at 100% property. But so, just assume they were 50%. The bill goes to 50,000, and then a detention credit of 50%, I'm sorry, then the 501(c)(3) credit of 50% on the $50,000. So, it goes to, their bill would be 25,000.
That's how I did the math. I didn't do it cumulative, that they get 50 plus 50 equals 100. Their bill's wiped out. Right, right, right. And I wouldn't agree with that either.
No, and that's, when I ran my analysis, I did it, I did the institutional credit based off the net of any detention credit they earned. And a lot of these that I ran, and I ran a worst-case scenario of if they all came up to 2020 standards, you know, what would happen? But, you know, I think there's very few at the 2020 standards.
So, let me, can we talk about the numbers a little bit here for a second? Just because I think, I think there's lots of questions around the numbers, so let's try and get some clarification here for a second. If you take, so I've got the big page now. Does this say that in 2020, if you did a 50% credit for the institutional people that we've identified, that it would be a total impact of $30,000? So, 61, I don't know if it's 61 less 30 or if it's 30, but it's basically a $30,000 impact if all the identified institutional players got their 50% credit. Is that, am I reading it right?
Yes.
Can you show me that?
60 is the bill.
And then it goes to 93,000.
Right.
652 under these numbers in 2026.
Right, and that's when, as Ms. Malloy said, that's when we're collecting $4.7 million of stormwater fee to go against the bonds. And I can't believe I didn't pull my calculator out. We're having a numbers conversation.
Less than 3%.
Less than 3%, one of the total.
It's 1.2%, it's almost exactly 2%.
2% of what we're totally collecting?
Yes. And that's if, if that's if they all get the full 50%.
Right.
And then, it's basically, as far as we can identify, and this is assuming, again, this is assuming that all of the property in each of these detention credits, I'm on the bottom now, all of the properties that are listed here, which, I mean, we did some homework around what the bigger properties are, right? We think we got the bigger properties.
Yes.
So, anybody, I mean, some of these are hundreds of dollars of credit. But all of these properties, again, it's $35,000 in 2020, and it's $106,000. And this is, this is with them not being multiplied, right? So, this would be, this would be more than the multiplied version because you would get, they're taking, the 50% credits are off the full bills in both cases, whereas if you did them combined, it would be less of a credit.
Correct.
Do you follow me? So, even, but let's, for a second, even if it is the full credit, you're talking about another 2% of our collections based on this credit. So, look, I know everything's going to move around a lot, but this just doesn't, this just doesn't concern me that we do this and then we're going to have to go to residents and say, oh, because we were dumb and we gave these credits out, we got to jack your bill up by 50% or something like that. I mean, it's going to go up naturally as we issue the bonds, but this doesn't expose us to that, I don't believe.
Well, can I talk about the numbers? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. If I did the math correctly, the 50% credit in 2026 would result in a cost shift from these institutions to other taxpayers of $2,809,560 over the life of the bonds.
Over 30 years.
Over 30 years.
Out of...
Now, that's a little high because I'm assuming that the...
What was, what was the total, 2 million?
2,809.
Yeah, out of 100 and roughly 140 million, I use four, seven for all 30, we'd be phasing it in, out of roughly 140 million.
Right. And in an earlier chart, Mr. Bremen said that there would be a $5 per resident increase because of this shift. But that was before we got the extended list of 501(c)(3)'s. If you include them, it's $19 a year to an average resident, or $576 per resident over 30 years. Right. And I'm not swearing it is.
Yeah, we didn't run that updated number, but just to clarify, and I think we all understand, but it's not an increase in the current projection to the residential rate. It just means that rate would potentially go up $19 less than we're planning. But I mean, it's an increase, but it's not, the projections we've laid out there for the community are not going to be higher. But yes, the resident would potentially pay more than they otherwise would have with no credit.
Correct.
No doubt, there's no doubt.
So, it doesn't matter whether the bill goes up or down, but they're going to be paying $19.20 a year more than average residents. Some will pay more, some will pay less.
Yeah, and then, so the public policy question is, is that a fair amount? If you think having these entities vibrant in the village supports property values and is good for residents, is that a fair amount or not?
Well, I, I'm...
Go ahead.
Can I add two things here? First of all, since we're talking about the math, and we've been talking about whether somebody applies for one or two, or both of these, so I just want to look at the math here. We're going to use Loyola as an example because, so if I understand this, if we did a 50% credit, basically, in the institutional credit, if I understand this correctly, Loyola's bill would go down by $9,000. Is that accurate?
In the first year.
In 2000?
Yeah.
I'm looking, okay? And then if I, if I add up that they also would qualify for detention credit, their bill is going to go down by $8,000. So, the total is $17,000.
No, that's not how we're doing it.
Okay, that's what I don't understand.
Yeah, so...
Because that's showing the post-credit.
Right, and that's because this is cumulative? So, the thought was that, take Loyola as an example, so 9153, that would go down by 50%.
Okay, so, they're getting a 75% reduction.
If...
I mean, just in terms of what we're, I mean, since we're trying to talk about numbers, that somebody who qualifies for both is getting a 75% reduction in their fee.
I think that's only if they've had detention on 100% of their property.
And this one's at 45% anyways, but it's in that zip code, yes.
And so, we're talking about a 75% reduction, and we're using them as an example. We just talked about the fact that 30% of, you know, our public right-of-way is what we should all share, you know, and then we're talking, in terms of, you shared with us that if we look at total impervious surface within the community, 30% of it is not owned, it's owned by, it's public right-of-way. And then we could assume that there is, whether you're holding it or not, there is cost, we have to build these, you know, so I could get up to higher than your 40%. That's where I could get up to 50% or whatever. So, I'm just bringing that up, that allowing an institution to get more than a 50% credit is not even paying for what I believe is the cost of the service. So, that's my first point. The second point is, I just want to go back to some of your, president Balinski, you talked about it's a policy, a policy decision. I agree with you that, yes, these private institutions are really important to our community. They create the vibrancy of our community. So do the schools, so do the parks, so do the businesses, so do the commercial properties. And we're not giving the commercial properties a benefit. And so, and those are, you know, we talk a lot, we've talked a lot about a board, about how important it is to have a vibrant commercial district, to have a vibrant downtown, and we're not giving a break to those businesses. And so, I just, I struggle with that. I struggle with that, that it's okay to do the private institutions, but it's not okay to do the commercial properties that are also very important to us. Secondly, and this is my, I know you won't agree with this, but I'm going to say it anyways. The numbers that we got, and I believe these numbers are still, are still changing, and the number that we got initially for phase one a year ago was, I believe, $20 million. Tonight, it was $24 million. That's a 20% increase. So, and I believe that we're not sure what the phase two and phase three numbers will be yet, so...
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with you on that.
So, that's why, that's why I'm not comfortable with us going with the maximum, you know, I need, I agree with what trustee Plunkett said, which is, I don't want to get to where we think, where we might want to be. I think a phase-in or a slower progression is really important because of the fact that these numbers aren't final, and we know they're going to change.
Right, but, but the increase in, the next increase in the stormwater fee when we issue our next bonds? Not known, won't be known. Can be adjusted depending on the circumstances, will be adjusted depending on the circumstances. The final increase in the bill, not known, will change. All we can do is our best guess right now, and I guess my point on the numbers is, we're talking about around the edges here. We're talking about 2% of, and let's just, you know, 2% for detention, and if you actually had a, if you actually had a not-for-profit get the full detention credit and the full 501(c)(3) credit, and again, using 50% each for illustration, that's 3%, you know, like that, that's what we're talking about here. None of our numbers will ever be that good. This is just right on the edges. It just, it's, that shouldn't be a reason. You can have other reasons for being concerned about it, certainly. And we will, we will agree to disagree a lot tonight, but I'm just not, I'm not worried about the financial, I'm not worried about the spreadsheet work. That's the easy part from my point of view. And it's what I do for a living, that may be part of it, but this is, this is the easy part. And we'll have to adjust, no doubt. And trustee Kennedy, your math is right. It's, whether it comes out of reserves, and that means...
It's cautious, it's cost-shifting.
There's money, there's money there. And if it comes out of reserves, that means we couldn't have lowered the rate more. So, there's no question that that's the ask on the table with regards to the institutional credit, is that people who aren't subject to that credit are picking up the remainder of it. And the question is, is that reasonable or not, given what the institutions do? I would, I would argue that there is a difference, trustee Dodd, between a profit-seeking entity and a mission-based entity in that respect. But with the detention credit, you are giving benefits. So, if someone, a developer does come in and they do their MWRD work, and they're like, oh my God, this is like $3 million, at least sort of the silver lining is that if we have a detention credit, their ongoing fee would be reduced. And, you know, ideally, you know, the future efficacy of the project is better because less water's going into it. That means it's just working better, bigger storm, it works better, you know? So, I mean, there's benefit when people create this detention, even if it's not in the spreadsheet. And frankly, the non-s spreadsheet benefit is probably more important. We'd rather have more stormwater detention, less water going into the system. It might, you know, if people think the system's going to be obsolete in 50 years or 100 years, and we're going to have to build extra conveyance or something else, every drop of water that doesn't go into the system extends the life of the project. You know, none of us can predict how much rain's going to fall in 20 years, but it certainly seems like we have to plan for what we've been getting lately. And, you know, we haven't had another 2013 that none of us want to have, but so...
No, I was just going to add one thing. Trustee Dodd, I completely understand, you know, the concern about the businesses, but we just have to remember, you know, this is based on your size and your impervious surface. So, a lot of the small businesses that we are normally concerned about for a lot of reasons probably will not have a very large stormwater utility bill just because of their size. And I think some of the larger retail that, you know, we're talking about, the Edens Plaza, you know, they are talking about an expansion, and that is going to have a detention component there. So, I think you can pick and choose, but I think that this is something that is not going to be burdensome, you know, especially to our small businesses.
I think they just don't have the...
I think, I think the...
It wasn't about, sorry.
I think trustee Dodd is getting at something different, which is sort of an equity issue. If we're going to have a standard for imposing a fee, they should be the same standards for everybody. And everybody agrees, I'm sure that nobody disagrees, that the institutions on the 501(c)(3) list are of great advantage to our community, and they help them out. I don't think they're going to leave because of the stormwater fee, but I don't think all these churches are going to pack up their bags and leave, but they...
It is happening in the city of Chicago, though.
Well, I, that doesn't really concern us.
It's not an impossibility.
It's not an impossibility. But I think that lots of things give advantage to the building, to the village. It's the commercial businesses, as trustee Dodd said, it's also the residents. And they can have financial challenges too. And if we're only going to consider the financial challenges of one class of rate players and not the others, I just don't feel very comfortable with that. I don't think that, and I don't know that we really want to go to a situation in which we evaluate every individual rate payer's financial situation to see where they can afford to pay their stormwater fee based on their income. And there are a lot of people in the village on fixed income.
There's no doubt, there's no doubt.
And even people who aren't on fixed income, I bet they can't go to their boss and say, I need another $500 to pay my...
And trustee Kennedy, I think, and by the way, we're going to, we're going to break in a minute. I got a little note from the side that they were looking for a break, and frankly, I could use a break too. But I do think actually your comment sort of crystallizes the question. The question is, are you willing to extend a credit to the 501(c)(3)'s because they are mission-based versus profit-based in the institutional world? And that is, that is, at the end of the day, the fundamental question. I think some will say, I agree with that, and some will say, amongst us and amongst the residents, some will say, I agree with that, we should, and some will say, I don't agree with that, that's not equitable, so...
Well, it's both that, the nature of what they are and what, but it's also the fact that it's, they're also pleading financial necessity or financial hardship. And otherwise, we wouldn't be talking about this at all, right? If this wasn't a burden on these, on these institutions, we wouldn't be talking about that. So, it really comes down to whether we're...
Or a smaller number in other words.
Correct, correct. So, it must be basically a question of whether we're going to consider the financial constraints of one group of rate players but not any others. And that troubles me.
Well, and again, the, if the bill was $141, like it is for the average resident, not that that isn't important to a lot of people, you know, we wouldn't be having this conversation. But I go back to what trustee Plunkett said, because that's why we're having this conversation. When these numbers first came out, and maybe shame on all of us, shame on me, I can do the math, when they say ERUs and all the rest, I never did the math to say that, oh my God, you know, we're going to ask, you know, we're going to ask the Bahai for $20,000 a year, you know, or we're going to ask, you know, the convent for $7,000 a year, or we're going to ask Ronald Knox for $2,000 a year, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a small property, so, you know, anyways.
Can I add one small thing?
Yes.
Just on businesses versus these institutional. Just one thing to think about, you know, a lot of these institutions, we require them to have a certain number of onsite parking that is impervious. A lot of our businesses, you know, they do not have their own parking lots. They rely on street parking, they rely on village parking that, you know, we are exempt because it's village parking. So, I think a huge part of impervious surface are parking lots. And, you know, these institutions, you know, have the parking lots, and a lot of our small businesses do not have to maintain or count as their impervious surface their own parking lots. I think that's a big difference in terms of, you know, where the burden lies.
Well, I think that's true with respect to the schools, and it may be true with respect to the newer churches and synagogues and temples, but I'm not sure that's true of the older churches. Most of the ones that I've gone to over the years for various events and weddings and so forth, they have no parking, or almost no parking.
But if they were built today...
But if they were built today, but they're not. So, it isn't the parking lot that's causing them to have this big fee. I just, we're not making them do it.
The size of their property.
It's the size of their property.
Which includes, in many cases, the parking lot's a fairly significant portion of the property. Not all of it, but a fairly significant...
Probably just, I would say just two or three of them, probably.
I just want to, I want to add, this, my comments for creating some of this discussion, so I just, I want to say, trustee Plunkett, I agree with you. My perspective wasn't to say that, well, you know, the businesses should be paying, it was more just, as we think about the rationale for why we might include an institutional credit, it was more about that rationale, and the rationale was that, one of them was, that they are providing a service to our community and that that's a reason maybe for us to consider it. And my only point was, that's the part I'd want us to be careful of because I think to, that we have businesses that are providing a service, residents, things like that. So, I wasn't trying to get into how much they were paying relative to others, it was just more as we think about the policy of why we feel comfortable, one way or the other, saying that they're providing a public benefit and we should recognize that, is what I was struggling with.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to call a recess for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 10:30, and then I believe we'll start with public comment, unless there's something pressing on people's minds. We've sort of, I think we sort of talked through our, I know I've certainly talked too much, but I think we talked through our stuff.
I'm not, I'm not sure that Trusty-
Oh, Trusty Kersman.
Kersman has had a chance.
No, I, not on account of me.
All right, so let's adjourn, we'll come back at 10:30, then I will ask again if there's something a trustee would like to say before we hear public comment.
Can we also, I mean, I think it might be helpful to speak after public comment?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Yep, okay. We'll be back at 10:30. Okay, so I'm going to call the meeting back to order at 10:32 PM. We are going to, we're not going to come to a conclusion tonight, okay? I think this is a very good conversation, very helpful sort of getting ideas and thoughts out there. I think the staff, I spoke to the staff at the break, and we can put some additional numbers together, sort of showing uncertainties and things like that. I've got some ideas myself, which, that always makes the staff shudder when I say, like, I've got some ideas of what some charts could look like. But we'll come back, the staff will come back with some more numbers, and then we will either schedule a committee of the whole, or we'll look for a meeting. Staff will reach out about scheduling committee of the whole, or we'll look for a meeting where the agenda's light. But we're not going to come to a conclusion tonight. That said, a lot of people did wait around for public comment, so I will open up to public comment. Are there any members of the audience who would like to address the board tonight?
One, two, three, four, five, six?
Okay, five or six. All right, let me just remind you, three minutes is our public comment rule. We can be a little loose with six people, but even with six people, that rolls us into 11 o'clock, so. Ms. Jaya, you want to, you want to start? I know you said you have children at home, and I apologize.
Child.
We're avoiding, we're avoiding the, we're trying to avoid the 2:00 AM meetings, but unfortunately, the 10:30, 11 o'clock meetings are still on the docket sometimes.
I understand, I certainly understand. My name is Kate Jaya, and I live at 325 Central in Womet, and I want to make very clear tonight that I am speaking on behalf of myself, just as a resident of the village. And I really appreciate the conversation that you all have had tonight around credits related to stormwater. I think it's been a really thoughtful conversation. I think you're addressing a lot of the important issues. I did write an email to the trustees before the municipal services meeting, expressing some thoughts about primarily the 501(c)(3) credit. I think the detention credit makes a lot of sense, for a lot of the reasons that were discussed tonight. You're incentivizing behavior that actually impacts the very problem that we as a village agreed to try to remediate. The problem I have with the 501(c)(3) credit, in addition to what I think Trusty Kennedy and Trusty Barrow very articulately discussed, which is that you're shifting this burden to residents, you're not incentivizing any behavior at all. And we have a storm, a giant stormwater issue that we all agreed needed to spend a lot of money, $68 million, which is actually going to be like $140 million, right, with debt service, as a village that we need to, we agreed as a village that we needed to spend this money. But part of that, I understood also was, and we also need to look at what we're doing, and use our environmental commission, and use our, all the resources we have to try to change our behavior as residents, as businesses, as nonprofits, change our behavior. And if we take money that we have and we give it away in credits for something that people, that has nothing to do with any behavior changes, that money could be used to change behavior that would actually impact the problem, and we're giving it away right off the bat. It has nothing to do with whether or not these institutions provide a benefit, I don't think that's in disagreement, it's just how do we use perhaps the same amount of money? Do we just put it back on residents? Do we perhaps use it for something else? So I would just ask the board to consider that, and I really don't think that we should be having a conversation that because we built an enough leeway that the residents won't know that their fee could have gone down, that's still shifting the burden to the residents, and I don't think we should be articulating that as somehow a justification for that. This is still a shifting of cost burden, and I think we should do that really thoughtfully and try to incentivize our behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Welcome.
Welcome. Hello. Hi, I am Suzanne Lefave, and I am the Vice President of Finance and Operations at Regina Dominican High School, and we, of course, are located at 701 Locust in West Womet. So thank you for an opportunity to speak, and I will keep it brief. So two years ago, Regina Dominican celebrated our 60th anniversary of educating young women on the North Shore, and for these past 60-plus years, we've been proud residents of the village and supportive neighbors. Many Womet residents, and perhaps some of you, have been in our auditorium. Each year, we offer it as a discounted rate to many areas and schools, both public and private, for graduations, recitals, concerts, and more. We've also welcomed a number of community organizations, local advocacy groups, and other nonprofits who need meeting space, or want to host an event or special activity on our property. So we see it as our duty to be a welcoming resource to our neighbors, and in such, we've built a reputation that I think speaks to our commitment to the village and to its residents. Please know that we stand with you, the village trustees, and our fellow residents in wanting this flood issues in West Womet addressed, and we are willing to share in the costs of financing this project, paying our share of the fee. So the reason that I'm speaking to you tonight is to ask for your serious consideration and ultimate approval of up to a 50% institutional 501(c)(3) credit for the stormwater utility fee that will start being charged this year. As Trusty Plunkett noted already, our fee this year will be $6,500. That's a full 60% increase in our water and sewer bill just for this year. It will escalate and triple to almost $20,000 in the next five years, and as we know, that'll continue for the next few decades. So unfortunately for us, cost is an important criteria that we cannot easily absorb, leaving us with a very undesirable task of either raising student tuition, cutting programs, or doing both. So tonight, I'm just asking for your very thoughtful and serious consideration of adopting this proposed institutional credit. It can lighten the load for mission-driven organizations like us, like houses of worship and other nonprofits. We're willing to do our share, but we're just asking for a little consideration to help us do our share. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't all run up at once.
Hi, I'm George Pierce, 1114 Forest. This is a letter from Father Wayne Watts, which I was going to read. He's the pastor of St. Joe's St. Francis Parish, who cannot be here tonight, but his letter, he and I are on the same page, just in case there's any question about that. And I'll provide you with a copy of the letter. Dear President Bolinsky and members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for the time you have devoted to the stormwater fee credit issue. I have attended the recent Municipal Service Committee meetings, but I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight. Your efforts with respect to this challenging issue are appreciated. As pastor of St. Joseph and Francis Xavier Parish, I request that you grant the greatest stormwater fee credit possible to our parish and all 501(c)(3) organizations in Womet. My request is supported by the following. An exemption has been granted to public schools. The rationale for exemption appears in part to be a concern that if public schools were charged the stormwater fee, services at schools may be affected. This rationale clearly applies to private schools in Womet. It is fair and appropriate to treat all schools the same. Secondly, 501(c)(3) groups are organizations that our community wants us to support. These organizations are exempt from real estate taxes because of the value they bring to our community. Our parish provides- Our parish provides education to nearly 700 students. We also provide temporary housing for homeless, emergency services for those in financial need, visitation to homebound, before and after daycare, summer activity programs, teen group meetings, services to those in need at Alcohol Anonymous meetings, support group for loss, a non-denominational service provided to those affected by a loved-one suicide, disabled adult services, and many other services that benefit not just members of our parish, but our entire community. Third, Womet is a community that thrives because of its many churches, schools, and charitable organizations. These organizations provide great value to our community, and it's appropriate to recognize this value with a credit against the stormwater fee. Thank you for your consideration, Father Wayne Watts.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dennis Donquist. I serve as Executive Vice President at Loyola Academy. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Frenzer, for, thank you for your service to the village, and Godspeed in your next endeavors. And, secondly, thank you to the committee. The conversations that have been had at the meetings have been fantastic, and I thank you for engaging your residents, especially those like us who are institutions, and I'm grateful for the time you've spent and the consideration you've put into this. We're asking that you please consider a credit for nonprofits. I know at Loyola, we are proud to be in Womet and consider ourselves to be a valuable asset to the community. Over the past three decades, we've undertaken a number of construction projects. During that time, we've made stormwater storage a part of our planning and execution, and we're proud to say we have reduced significantly the stormwater impact in our neighborhoods through these projects. I'm gonna read just a note that was in a, a data, a letter dated November 18th from Father McGrath, our president. Students at Loyola Academy hail from 75 ZIP codes and come from all socioeconomic walks of life. Our values are deeply rooted in promoting diversity that not only benefits our school community, but makes us better as partners and neighbors in the village of Womet. Since our move here in 1957, Loyola has been a valuable contributor to the Womet economy. Our students, faculty, staff, and parents who visit campus every day have had a significant impact on local businesses, and as you are aware, approximately 450 new to our township students are enrolled at Loyola, saving taxpayers annually $9 million. I wanna thank you all for your time and your thoughtful consideration, and I really ask you to consider a credit for nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Seeger. I'm a 20-year resident of Womet. I live at 417th Street. I'd like to talk to you about a proposal to grant credits to 501(c)(3) organizations. For the record, I am not a resident who will directly benefit from the village stormwater project. I am, however, more than willing to pay my fair share of the stormwater utility fee, knowing that the village has agreed upon a fair and equitable fee policy. But now, it is my understanding that the village is considering granting stormwater fee credits to village 501(c)(3) organizations, most of which are churches and synagogues. I oppose this for the following, that are based on fairness principles. One, all properties in Womet are a burden to the village stormwater system and should pay their fair share based on their impervious surfaces. Two, entities, as well as residents and businesses, who want relief from their fees, should be encouraged to improve their properties to be less burdensome to the system. Hardship relief does not promote this kind of behavior. Three, 501(c)(3) entities should not be granted credits when residents and businesses are not granted similar opportunity to claim hardship. We have many residents who are on fixed incomes and businesses that may not survive rent or fee increases without some sort of relief. 2% is 2%, and they may not be able to afford 2%. Four, any credit granted will be offset by higher fees to village residents and businesses who still don't know the extent of the increased fees they will pay after 2020. The village hasn't heard much from residents, so I thought it was important to get some feedback. I've spent a number of hours over the past two weeks collecting 75 signatures against hardship relief for 501(c)(3) entities. For the most part, my signatures were randomly obtained by standing in the cold in front of a government building. The average time I spent talking with residents for each signature was around four to five minutes. Surprisingly, or not, there were still a few who knew nothing about the stormwater project. Most did not understand the fees and how they were calculated, nor did they understand how their fees will be increased over the next few years. The overwhelming majority of those who did not sign did so because they didn't know enough about the issue to feel comfortable signing anything. Only four or five people were supportive of granting credits to 501(c)(3) entities. The vast majority of people I talked with were opposed to granting the credit for reasons I cited above. I know, had the weather been warmer and had I had helped collecting signatures, I would have had many more. Residents simply do not wanna pay any more than their fair share. Some will argue that the credit is good for the village and that these organizations mean much to the village and its residents. Please keep in mind that not all residents belong to these organizations. In addition, these organizations already receive significant and important government services for free due to their tax-exempt status. The stormwater fee is a usage service fee for services we all use. We should all pay our fair share. Thank you for your time and consideration, and here are the signatures.
Yep, you can bring those up. We'll circulate them. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? I think that was everyone? Oh, okay.
Good evening, everybody. Chris Canning, 1015 Cherokee Road. First item, congratulations to Mr. Frenzer. Thank you for your service to the village. I think I counted Mr. Berman, Ms. Berger, and I, Mr. Frenzer, were at his first meeting, so it's nice to be at his last meeting. So, good luck in your future endeavors. Number two, thank you very much to Chairman Sullivan, Trustee Kennedy, Trustee Kersman, and the Municipal Services Committee for addressing this issue. I would urge all of you to take a look at the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on September 23, 2019, where you discussed the exemptions for government entities. I found tonight's conversation and the municipal services conversations having far more rigor in the level of discussion than at that meeting. I would ask you to take a look at that and look at the reasons that were considered as to why to go ahead and offer exemptions to those organizations. I will tell you to dispel any notion, the nonprofits were not aware of that meeting. And I actually think, after listening through the Municipal Services Committee meetings and tonight, that that meeting may have gone in a very different direction if nonprofits, as well as the government entities were there that evening. Please note that the first time the nonprofits were aware that the utility fee was going to apply to them was the end of October, so a month after that. So, again, thank you very much for your consideration of this. It has taken, as I said, a far greater and more rigorous look at things, and I ask that you consider the nonprofits in the way that you consider the government entities as well. Last but not least, there's a question about value to our village. You don't have to pay attention to anything I or anyone else say about this, but going back into our comprehensive plan, which is something we rely on, and which I believe the board is going to take another look at, it is kinda surprising, it's been 20 years since anybody's looked at it, but you're probably thinking, well, we're coming up on the centennial of the first plan of Womet that was adopted in 1922, we oughta get around to doing something. One of the goals that the comprehensive plan drew on from the 1922 plans and other plans says, "The village should promote parks and open space, as well as recreational, artistic, cultural, and educational opportunities for village residents." A credit for the nonprofits is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. So, there is a foundation for why, President Bolinsky, your point, what is a public policy reason, is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. We want to foster educational opportunities, we want to foster institutional opportunities. Doing this helps them fulfill their mission to our residents. So, thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you very much for taking time to look at this issue as you have over the last few months. My only regret is we didn't do it earlier in the year, and then we would've been done with this by now. Have a good evening, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, last call? Very good. I will close public comment now. As I said prior to opening it, I think we've made a lot of progress here tonight. I think that, I hear the concerns about numbers, and so, we'll ask the staff to work on some numbers and some presentations to sort of try and lay out the impact of these decisions, and maybe some uncertainty around, well, what if interest rates are lower, what if this, that? So, people can get their sort of head around the likely range of outcomes, okay? We know, in, in my business, in finance, when you make a projection, the one thing you know about it is that it will be wrong. You don't know how much, you don't know which direction, you hope the right direction and not a lot, but it's gonna be wrong. So, we can, I think we can, I think we can outline sort of a range of, I'm looking at Melinda while I'm saying this, a range of, of possibilities and likely outcomes that will inform the board, because I think while there's been some conversations about the topics, there's very much, the levels are in flux, and even people who are supportive of one credit or another, I don't think there's real certainty around the levels. So, that's the plan. If any of the trustees would like to, and we still have a rest, we still have a meeting to finish off here, we can't just all walk out. If any of the trustees would like to add anything at this point in time, I will open the floor, and we can talk about it, but we're not done, and we will be talking about it again.
I have nothing more to add at this time.
Can I just try to seek a little clarity on exactly what we wanna bring back from a financial analysis standpoint, so that we can continue to move forward at the next meeting?
Well, I think we need to have, first off, let's, let's try and get a little more confident about the range of people who may be eligible for the credits. So, you know, for example, on the detention credits, you can start with the large properties and say, well, we've got, we've got all properties bigger than a certain amount, and we can tell you that the property of that amount is like $100. So, if there's any remainders that we haven't got, it's small. I think around the 501(c)(3)'s, it's probably the same. I don't know what our sources are on this and how we can do that, but narrow that down. And then I think on the financial projection, and I can talk to you about what, I have a vision of some graphs. Graphs are always helpful, numbers are not as helpful, showing sort of the revenues and the expenses and a range of potential alternatives, and if this credit is applied, how does this line move, and if this credit is applied, how does that line move? Melinda, does that sort of make sense? You following me? We can talk afterwards, too. I, I do have an idea of what I think would be helpful.
Just one thing.
Come on up, come on up, if you wanna...
When you're talking about the ranges for detention credits, is that what you were saying, you wanted to look at how much can apply to particular entities, given how much is on the property? Is that what you were looking for?
No, I think, I think, I think, one of the questions that was raised was, do we even have all the properties? And so, to do a little more rigor around what all, quote, "all the properties are," which I assume we have sort of a list of...
I'm gonna say, we have a fairly, we have a list that we've already put together.
Yeah, so, and maybe it's just more certainty around it, 'cause there was a lot of uncertainty every night. I think on the range of, the range of outcomes, it's much more around, okay, what if the project is 5% more expensive, what if the interest rate is three and a half instead of, what if it's four and a half? And so, you'll sort of see, I mean, I have the likely scenario bar, and then you sort of have this like cone around it that shows, this is the reasonable amount, and then what the impact of the expect, you know, the revenue line would be relative to different credits and the like.
Okay, so that last part, I'm following up. That, that I can definitely see. I, I, I'll let other folks speak to this, but us narrowing down some of that other dataset on those particular properties, I know we have kind of a...
I think you've probably done more work here than, than...
I think we're close to...
I think you're actually a lot closer than you're sort of indicating.
We have a large parcel listing that we will continue to go through to narrow it down, and we will start with the largest properties, we're gonna narrow it down until we get to those properties that are small, that are gonna have us...
Right, that's, that's exactly what I'm thinking. That's exactly what I'm thinking. So, you get to the point where, if you miss someone, it's de minimis in, in terms of the impact.
Okay.
President, President Bolinsky, I'd also like to see from staff some comparison to what some of the surrounding suburbs that have utility fees do with respect to detention and 501 entities.
I think we have some of that.
We have some, we can flush that out with more detail.
Yeah, we have just a couple of examples, though, I think, not, not as...
I'd like, as much as we can get, I'd like to get a sense of what other folks are up to.
Other, other...
Yeah, maybe some information on parking lots, you know, what percentage of property of some of these institutions are parking lots, and what we require them to have.
So, how much of the impervious on some of these properties is related to a village mandated feature, like a parking lot, versus the property, the building, and the like?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Eric's taking notes. Our new Assistant Village Manager, for those of you who haven't met him, sitting in the front row.
So, this was helpful. If more ideas come forward, we can certainly keep flushing this out.
So, how often do you update the model? I mean, 'cause if I understand it, I mean, part of our challenge has been what Raffalas did, or it was very high level, and as you do the bills, how often are we updating, getting more accurate data?
And the next point at which we'll do an update to the model will be after we get the construction pricing, that we can update it at that point in time for the, for phase one. So, when we get those good prices on Thursday, we'll look to see what kind of timeframe it is to do that. We've been updating it probably on a weekly basis over the last month or so, as this discussion has gotten more refined. Prior to that, there was updates, well, I can't go back to much more than a month.
But, we're also updating it every billing cycle. So, as we bill out a new residential billing cycle, we're cleaning that up, and that's giving us more certainty in how many properties we're billing.
And how often are we doing the billing cycles?
We've got, is it seven billing cycles?
Seven, I think.
And so, the next one will happen, go out next week, so we have now, then three cycles that we're gonna do. So, remember, they have all the single family.
Right.
And still waiting for the non-single family, and they're just not gonna, they're not gonna see that data until the end of the month, early March.
So, we haven't even billed non-single family yet?
No.
Got it.
What's happening is, is we clean it up, and we're pulling properties out of the single family, some of them are gonna move to the multifamily, but we don't know how many yet. So, that's, that's why it's just, there are so many moving pieces in our projection. Given the requests for information and this evolving process, we're looking at March to come back to the board to continue this discussion. We're gonna need some time, especially with the stormwater bids coming in and the PUD that we're looking at. So, we'll push this discussion a little bit, and that'll give us more time and more concrete information, too.
Yeah, I'd rather have, I'd rather have a more complete conversation than an interim conversation. I think the board at this point is sort of, we sort of laid it out there, and now there's some numbers that, that people are looking to better inform the decision.
Time is our friend right now, nailing that down a little bit. Okay. Trustee Dodd?
I think it would be helpful, building on some of the comments that the, we made in public comment, I think it would be helpful for us to understand the impact of the decision we made to, on some of the local government entities, to just know the cost impact that had to the residents, just in terms of a comparison.
A similar, in essence, a similar chart to this one, but for the people that have already been existed.
Yes, yes, I think, yes, yes.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
And then I just wanna say, just, you know, I'm, thank you, President Bolinsky, for, you know, asking for these numbers. I'm okay with the uncertainty of the numbers, it was just more, so I, I hope that you're not feeling like you're doing this to suffice for me, because I'm okay with it, it was more, because the numbers are more fluid, I want us to have a little more leeway in what we started with. So, and if we don't wanna have that leeway, then, you know, so I just wanted to clarify that, that...
Well, I think, I think you're not the only person who is unsure about what the level should be.
The percent.
Yeah, exactly. And that eventually, we have to make that decision.
Exactly.
So, yeah, so, it's fine. It's good. I think it's good that we're, but again, I think this was a great conversation, okay? We've got a lot out there, talked about a lot of... We've got a lot out there, talked about a lot of stuff. I think the issue is sort of, is out there. We know what it is, and we'll go from there. Okay. So, Trustee Sullivan, I think that's it for you.
All other items were approved on consent.
Trustee Kersman, the Public Safety Committee.
All items on consent.
And Trustee Plunkett, the Judiciary Committee.
No report.
There are no reports from our special committees. Item 7 is new business, there's no additional new business discussed. I deferred public comment, general public comment, until the end of the meeting, so I need to go back to that now. So, we're returning to item 2. Are there any residents who would like to address the board on a matter which was not already talked about tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to item 8, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Or move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We stand adjourned. I'm gonna hold one. All right. Start saying without objection, sort of...